Next Monday, February 27th, we'll have a presentation from the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee and a briefing on their questionnaire and a work session item which is a continued discussion of financial matters and budget priorities. Following Monday, March 5th, we'll have a work session item, a continued discussion of Tacoma Junction Task Force report. And then I just wanted to call your attention to ward nights. We couldn't do the one that we wanted to do on March 5th, so we're going to start ward nights on Monday, April 2nd, and that will be Ward 3 Night. And there are open ward night possibilities for Monday, May 7th, and Monday, June 4th. And if my colleagues would like to think about those nights and--
Sorry, would you repeat those dates?
May 7th and June 4th. And if somebody wants to grab one of those--
I'll take May 7th. I'll take June 4th.
Well, that was quick.
Yeah, Ward 4, June 4th.
If anybody wants to fight them for those and make the case that your ward would be a better one to do on those nights--
You trying to start something?
I just don't want to foreclose possibilities. So, you know, we'll get to everybody, but if somebody wants to do it sooner rather than later, lobby your colleagues, but we'll get going with those. The next item is public comment period. For anybody who'd like to comment on anything that is, well, let's see, anything tonight, since we have no voting session items, comment on anything. And if you come to the podium and identify yourself and just keep your comments to three minutes, we'll go to Mr. Lovelace in the back first.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I live at 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. One thing I want to bring up tonight is last week, we talked about committees a lot toward the end of the meeting, and I've been thinking all week, my mind's been wandering, and I've been thinking what Tacoma Park really needs is a city, is a progressive city, we need a peace and justice committee. You know that? So we can figure out where we stand in our real world, the world as a whole, local and national and international scene, what we can do to make our world a better place. We need to have a peace and justice committee where we can stand up and speak out as we need. Because what happens in the world, happens in Tacoma Park. They're all human beings, we're all linked together. What happens in one country should affect us all in our own country. Our taxpayer money is paid for it. Our boys and girls are going overseas and getting killed. You know, and we have to speak out against warfare, whether we know it or not, we have to speak out as a city. We've got a pretty good anti-nuclear policy, pretty good environmental policy, we need a peace and justice policy. Because one thing we, one thing I noticed we haven't done yet is, we need to have a memorial set up also to honor Tacoma Park residents who have been killed in the line of battle, and law enforcement that have been killed in the line of duty, so that we can stand up and look at and see what sobering warfare and violence really is. You know, we really have to do something like that, and as a peace and justice committee, I think that would be one of the things we'd want to work on, and other ways of standing up against the violence of warfare and the violence of we see in our cities. You know, and standing up against poverty, and what we can do to stop it. I went down to the occupation last Saturday, and they seem to be holding on strong. They tried to break them up, and they're standing up and resisting. Same thing Tacoma Park should be doing, we should be standing up and resisting the warfare. And I think as a people, we can do it. People call us the People's Republic of Tacoma Park, I take that as an honor. We are the People's Republic, and we should stay the People's Republic and a peace republic. And I know we can do it. And I think, you know, that if we stand up, we can much better decide what we want to present to our city councils, you know, like that Fund Our Cities, Fund Our Communities thing I tried to bring over. That would have been a beautiful way to stand up against warfare and Lockheed, you know, and against the slide downhill that we're doing in the Middle East. You know, before you know it, we're going to be at war with Iran, you know, and we don't need that. The people of Iran don't need it, and the people of the United States don't need it. Eventually, we're going to be singing the song, "Where Have All Our Soldiers Gone?" long time ago. Gone to graveyard, everyone. When will we know? When will we ever, ever learn? When will we ever learn? We'll be singing that someday, and we'll be answering that question. When we really have to go to battle, if we really do get invaded, that's where all our soldiers will be, in graveyards, needlessly wasted. Wasted all that talent, all that protection, all that humanity, we will have wasted it. And as a city of Tacoma Park, we've got to stand up and do everything symbolic and realistic, no matter what it is, we've got to do what we can non-violently to stand up and resist that. If that's our brothers and sisters--
The beeper isn't working tonight, so--
Okay, well, anyway, I just want to say, we need a peace and justice committee in Tacoma Park so we can better serve our peace community. Thank you for letting me share, and please consider that.
Thank you.
Reconsider that, Fund Our Communities, please.
Anybody else?
I'm Lorraine Pearsall, I'm speaking on behalf of Historic Tacoma on the draft MOU agreement with SHA. We would like to see the city make more progress in the negotiations. We were very disappointed with this version. We ask that the Maryland 410 easement agreement not be adopted as written, and that you renew your negotiations. And let me give you the following comments. First of all, we think that the maintenance easement and the Carroll-Flower Avenue transfer improvement should have separate MOUs and should be filed separately with the land records. These are separate transactions and should be unbundled from each other. As council had previously requested, the Carroll-Flower Avenue transactions can be expedited and not be held up by further negotiations on MD-410. Also, MD-410 issues deserve to be deliberated by council separately and in their own right. Second, the city should take title of all the segments of MD-410 through Tacoma Park as part of this agreement, and this should be clearly stated and should be absolutely part of the negotiations. SHA should relinquish whatever ownership it believes it may have on any segment of MD-410 through Tacoma Park as part of this agreement. Number three, there are discrepancies between whereas clauses and the agreement. The agreement specifies seven business days for comment, the city states it is 10 business days in the whereas clauses. However, a seven or 10-day comment period really isn't adequate, and it actually pretty much rules out city council involvement and public participation, so it's far too short. And we believe that the city council should have the right to hold public hearings on changes to MD-410 when it deems it is appropriate to do so. Even though the city-- Four, even though the city is retaining title to the road, we can see no place where the city has any local control as part of this agreement. The city should have some approval authority, and it's just absolutely lacking in this. Number five, there should be a termination clause and a reasonable way to address and resolve grievances. We ask you to consider that. Right now, we don't see them in there. Under general provisions, it is stated that the agreement shall injure two and be binding upon the city of Tacoma Park, its agents, successors, and assigns, but says nothing about SHA. In short, it's kind of one-sided. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Giuseppe Chiamino. I have lived at 303 Hilltop Road in Ward 5 since 1989. I would like to welcome the new council members, this is my first time in front of you. And I would also like to thank the mayor, council members Schultz, who's not with us, Siemens and Snipper, who supported Resolution 201034 almost two years ago. That resolution was the culmination of years of cooperative effort. When I learned that the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood, which includes the streets in the city, which includes streets in the city of Tacoma Park, was working within the county's guidelines to apply for traffic restrictions, I, along with Mike Bojeron of the Sligo Park Hills Citizens Association, briefed the neighboring Ritchie Citizens Association in the March of 2006. That's how long this matter before you has been going on. The city of Tacoma Park staff has been involved in the process, including meetings with the county from as early as May of 2006. Resolution 201034 supported not only the request of the city residents within Sligo Park Hills for traffic restrictions, but also supported the request of the Ritchie Citizens Association for full-time traffic calming in preference to traffic restrictions. Today, you're being asked to consider a resolution communicating the city's recommendation on a petition area so that the county may proceed with implementation of the requested traffic restrictions. In the draft before you, the deputy city manager has provided a well-reasoned proposal that both respects the guidelines in the county code and includes those of us within the city of Tacoma Park that reside on streets for which the traffic restrictions will be implemented. I want to thank the deputy city manager, city staff, and city council for all their hard work concerning this resolution, and urge the city council to pass the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lord Chakuti, and I live at 425 Ethan Allen Avenue. And I sent, talking about the MOU regarding 410, I sent most of my comments in writing, so I hope everybody had a chance to receive them. In general, my concerns are that it's sort of, it doesn't hold SHA to any standards at all. It seems very one-sided. I'm concerned about the lack of accountability in terms of standards for maintenance, the lack of input from the city in terms of permits, in terms of signalizations, in terms of the crosswalks. So I'm not going to repeat the stuff that I talked about in my written commentary, but I just, I wanted to add the fact that the Junction Task Force has a lot of exploration of what could happen in the junction to make it function better, and some of them are relatively simple things, or we thought they were relatively simple things, like the signalization changes, optimizing the signals, and also adjusting the signals over time if they're not working. And it seems like this particular MOU sets us up to not be able to do anything, even in that very minimal place of playing with the signals. And so that doesn't even begin to consider, if we were to play with the bus bay chunk area that I personally think we ought to take off to make that other lane, chop the chunk, is what I like to call it. If we were to do that, that would be a whole level of negotiation with SHA, and this particular negotiation makes me feel like that, that's going to be hopeless, and that doesn't even begin to consider if we want to explore any of the other more significant changes to the junction area. So it seems like this is almost like the practice negotiation with SHA for, does the city have any control and any input in its own boundaries? And that, so it raises a lot of concerns for me about the fact that maybe we don't, and I'm curious about the negotiation process and what the options are at this point. I understand that the city, it's in the city's interest to keep SHA funding the maintenance, and so that may be that the city's sort of determined that that's a significant enough issue, that we're willing to give up all of everything else that matters to us, but it looks like that's all we got in this particular negotiation. And so I'm curious about how the city can get leverage, what the role of District 20 delegation's been, and any other state relationships that we have. I almost wonder, and I hate to say this because I generally don't think, you know, I think everything ought to be transparent, but I wonder if it's like a real estate negotiation that maybe there ought to be a closed session of the council to figure out how to best negotiate with SHA. It just, it comes off as a very one-sided, one-sided document, and I wonder why we have so little control and leverage in it. And so, you know, hopefully there's some answers, maybe to get those answers, there's got to be some private meetings, but I hope the city can figure out how to get that leverage. And I will listen to your answers on my TV at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll-- Oh, sorry, go ahead.
My name is Susan Robb, and I live on Manor Circle, probably backing up on Ethan Allen in mere feet from Carroll Avenue, both state highways. I was concerned, I echo what Lorraine and much of what Lorie said, particularly the one-sided nature of the current MOU. I also was on the task force for the junction. We have, we are mid-process in trying to get the signals coordinated in the junction. We are asking the city to do, finish the work we have initiated with State Highway, and this MOU pretty much puts into question the city's ability to carry that out. And after spending over a year of weekly meetings, I would like to see some results from the work that we did and that we are turning over to the city at this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andy Kellerman, and I live on 410, so it's another 410 comment. Two comments. One is, I second, I stand behind all the other comments that were made before me about the singular, singularly one-sided MOU. That's very interesting, why that should be. And number two, my comment is that we're here again without a public forum, a public discussion of something as important as 410 and Flower Avenue. Those are two major streets of the city, and if we do something wrong now, we're going to be sorry for a very, very long time about that. I think that we should get as many people together and get as many, as much sight of it, and believe me, just like the last time, if we can fill this auditorium with residents and our representatives in Annapolis, we'd get SHA to listen, and we would have some, not some, but considerable leverage and word on what happens in these MOUs. I would like to see this council table the issue till we can have a forum and we can get the Annapolis people in on this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let me just briefly say that there have been a number of public discussions on the 410 issue, and where we are now is that there were negotiations that took place, and what we're doing is bringing it back to a public forum so that the council can get briefed, so that the public can hear. This is a work session, this is not something that we have seen, and so this is coming back to what we've been talking about in public all along. Well, next we go to council comments. Councilmember Daniels, come on.
Oh, wow, thank you, Mayor Williams. Just, I'm back at gold stars. It's tough to give gold stars after the comments, but I'm going to do it anyhow. It's to Ward 3, and I acknowledge and admit to my bias and prejudice in that direction. The first set of gold stars is to everyone who came last week to the Tacoma Junction Task Force. The majority of the people in the audience were from Ward 3. I really appreciate their support. Thank all of you who sent in comments about the suggestion of making Sycamore one-way either permanently or during rush hours only. This kind of eye-to-detail comment can only help your Ward 3 representative and your city government in action. I really appreciate that kind of input, the same kind of input that we got tonight about several of the items we have in the, on the agenda this evening. The second set of gold stars is also to Ward 3. The 6,700 block of Poplar Avenue, when under siege from a WSSE contractor and their permanent temporary patch, which worked well as a traffic calming device, stayed the course, worked with the city, who in turn worked with WSSE and got the issue completed and the area cleaned up properly. That's how, that's how it all should work, and it worked out well for them, and I think if everyone continues to follow those lines of information and work, everything will be good. And I just, I promised last week I'd come back with a little bit about the junction businesses, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk about two of the, I call them niche businesses. They're very specific to certain clientele. On any given Saturday, you can walk into Roland's Unisex Barber Shop and feel the number of people in there and the energy. Roland's has probably been in the junction longer, at this point, longer than any other business other than the firehouse. There are three generations of Dawes, and I think there could be a fourth. I'm not, I know there are three, I'm not sure if there's a fourth or not, all cutting hair on any given Saturday. Lots of people, lots of energy, lots of things going on. And it's now unisex, and I don't know when that sign went up, it was a long time ago, so there are ladies in the back also getting their hair done. Roland is a community advocate and knows a whole lot about the history of the junction and Tacoma Park. He was also a council member for, not too many years ago, so gold stars to Roland and Roland's Unisex Barber Shop, an important place to go check out on any Saturday. Now, the second one that a lot of people don't have a clue about what goes on behind the glass facade is Healy Surgeons. Healy Surgeon is a real niche business. I was sure there were only two of these kinds of places in the whole country, but I Googled it, and guess what? They're 19. Healy Surgeons actually restores and builds Austin Heelys. Austin Heelys is a British import car that was brought into this country, I guess, or at least the ones they work on from 1954, that's Healy 100s, to about 1962, and that's Healy 3000s. And that's all about how many spark plugs they have. Healy Surgeons has been in our hood since 1985, they've been in business since 1970, and so we don't get a chance to see too much, but they've been in business for that long, and they're doing, you know, it puts us on the map for anyone who has, knows anything about an Austin Healy. These are very special, both are very special businesses, and I appreciate them, and I'll keep coming back with some of the other businesses. I know we all know about the co-op, but we don't know about everything that's happening up at the junction. So there'll be more to come, and I thank you all for listening to me. You're a captive audience.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Well, I don't give out gold stars usually, but I'll give out one to Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams is the chair of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, which hosted County Executive Isaiah Leggett last Friday's meeting and discussed a number of issues, including tax duplication and so on. I wasn't present at the meeting myself, but I did see some of the follow-up, and I'm very happy that we're taking a assertive tone in the follow-up with County Executive and trying to get some clarity from him that has not, has not been apparent in the last few years, and also push to some conclusion, the County Revenue Sharing Task Force, get the report out, and then I hope we can move forward on those issues with that report as ammunition. Moving on, I wanted to see if we could clarify a couple of things from past council discussions. It wasn't clear to me whether the council had agreed to give direction to the city's tree commission, requesting the tree commission to come up with some kind of strategy for increasing the proportion of tree coverage in Tacoma Park. We discussed that at the meeting a few weeks ago when the tree commission and the city arbors reported, but it wasn't clear whether the council was giving them that direction, which I would like to see. Was hoping we could clear that up now.
My sense is that we had given that direction.
So has that been conveyed to them?
I don't know. We'll follow up on that.
Okay, good. Another point, the council, previous council and the current one, has been discussing the sustainability coordinator position for some time. The current council decided that the preferred approach is to put the sustainability coordinator out for bidding to an outside firm on contract. The city manager has indicated that she has planned to, or is discussing that contract with a company that is currently on contract to Montgomery County to use that contract vehicle. My understanding had been that the sustainability coordinator, given its visibility and importance to the city, would be put out for open competitive bidding by anyone who chose to reply to the terms. The city manager has indicated that she and staff, in particular, City Public Works Director Darrell Braithwaite, don't have the capacity at this time, as we go into the city budget season, to create and administer an RFP. I was hoping to get some clarity from, I hope I stated that all right, to get some clarity from council colleagues whether they wanted to see the sustainability coordinator position go out to open competitive bidding, or whether it was acceptable to use an existing Montgomery County vehicle with a particular firm.
And the city manager had indicated to me that if this was of importance to the council, that she'd prefer we schedule a work session and discuss that, is that right?
I think it might be appropriate, just that there's a number of people in the audience tonight for some items, and I didn't want to take up a lot of time in case it got into an extensive discussion. But honestly, it's whatever the council wishes to do.
So we can have that discussion, we'll schedule it ASAP.
All right, thank you. One last item. We received a petition that was signed especially by a number of seniors about fire station sidewalk problems. I wasn't able to get any kind of clarification on exactly what the problem is. The sidewalk in front of the fire station is fine, so far as I can tell, immediately in front. In the areas, for instance, in front of Healy Surgeon and the, I'm sorry, I forget what Johnny's is actually called, the Tacoma Auto Shop, and then on the other side of the fire station as well, the sidewalk is pretty bad in terms of narrowness and cracks or, I don't know what you call it, cuts in there. But I wanted to know what we plan to do in response to that petition.
I know that I had asked for clarification from the public works director, and I don't think I ever got the answer back on the one particular location that was of most concern.
My recollection is that she was going to go out and measure, that she felt that the sidewalk, from her recollection, was compliant and there were no ADA-related issues. I'll follow up with her tomorrow and see if she had the opportunity to do that.
If it's appropriate, Mr. Kellerman wants to say something. Would you prefer not?
I want to keep it to council comment at the moment, we can, we'll get the information.
Okay, so, yeah, I wanted to pursue that issue, and then a similar type of issue around, especially around Tacoma Junction. The city public works director is pursuing replacement parts and repairs to a fair number, I think something like a total of eight if you extend to downtown Tacoma, I'm sorry, near Victory Tower, lamp posts that are either partially damaged or totally missing. So that's another area where we can improve the streetscape, make it safer, but also has aesthetic appeal, so that's another similar issue that I'm tracking. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I'll comment on the sidewalk in front of the fire station, in that my personal view is that the biggest problem there is that there's a planter, a wooden-edged planter bed that juts out like a knife straight toward the sidewalk as you're coming, as you're moving toward the co-op. And that is an obstacle to navigate around. With the stroller, for example, is the way I've experienced it, it's a difficult point to navigate around. And it was put in immediately, you know, it was put in as part of the construction of the new fire station, so it was, it's a new design element that was added. The second thing I wanted to raise is, about a month ago, the city staff received from the Long Branch Neighborhood Association, a request for support and guidance on some traffic calming measures that were part of earlier traffic studies, as well as some stop signs. So I was just curious to get an update from the city staff, in particular, the city manager, on the stop sign piece of that. And that, I'll stop there.
Okay, and I've just got a comment or two. As I was reviewing the draft minutes for this evening, I was looking back over a point that I thought I just wanted to say a little bit more about to try and explain why I think something is important for the city to be doing. And this was the discussion on February 6th, where some council members said that they were going to vote against certain resolutions, and that there were lots of ways to fund transportation needs in the state, and it's the state's problem to solve. And some council members were talking about that if it's a city issue, they would rather focus on city issues and on-- focus on city issues and on issues that the city can affect, and said that they felt they were elected by residents to address Tacoma Park issues. Now, I advocate on citizens' behalf to other levels of government, and that the council should be known for taking votes and doing the hard things, instead of things that don't require any sacrifice on our part. And I wanted to just make some comments about this, because I think that those resolutions do focus our efforts on issues that the city can affect, and they do focus us on taking votes and doing the hard things. We've already made the sacrifice, and we don't want to continue to make the sacrifice each and every year going forward. The reason to support a resolution to increase the gas tax, or similar measures, is precisely because it affects our state shared revenues. The highway user revenues from the state were cut 95% starting in August of 2009, and this removed more than half a million dollars in revenues from our city budget. We've already sacrificed over half a million dollars in the FY-10 budget, another half a million dollars in the FY-11 budget, and over half a million dollars again in the current FY-12 budget. These monies are paid into the Transportation Trust Fund by residents who buy gasoline, who register their cars, and who title their cars. A portion of these monies is supposed to be returned to us by the state to pay for our transportation infrastructure, to repair and maintain our roads. We need to spend time and effort to get these monies back and to protect them in the future. That's why I spend time going to Annapolis every week, why I fought to be named Chair of the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee, why I met with the Speaker of the House of Delegates, Mike Bush, today, to talk about getting our HUR monies restored, and why we need to push everyone around the state to restore these monies. And that's why Councilmembers Snapper, Daniels Cohen, Mail, Siemens, and I all went to District 20 last night, to District 20 Night. And it's to make sure that everyone in the city understands why, one of the reasons why these types of resolutions are important. I thank Councilmember Grimes for my gold star, and I want to see the gold star and whether it's made of certain carats of gold, or whether it's just going to be foil, or whether it's going to be a wrapper, but I look forward to getting my gold star. And I also wanted to mention that Councilmember Snapper and I met with Pastor Gagné of the Presbyterian Church last week, and had a very good discussion with him about community kitchens and commercial kitchens, and what the Presbyterian Church is wanting to do in the community. And it was very helpful, and I think we found a lot of areas of common interest, and it was a very good discussion, and I want to make people aware of that, and that we're trying to help the Presbyterian Church do what they need to do. Councilmember Grimes, you have another comment.
Thank you. Since you brought up the community kitchen side, I wanted to mention that the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church is planning a public meeting to talk about community kitchens and their plans, and maybe bigger topics, on Sunday afternoon, March the 4th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the church. There'll be information going out to the community about that, but folks who are interested in the topic might put that on their calendar now. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move along. City managers' comments?
Just one comment. As the mayor mentioned, we will be having another pre-budget work session next week. Jessie and I are following up with some of the large grant recipients that the council had indicated it would like more information about before making a final decision. We will also be presenting next week information on the preliminary property values. If there is any other information that the council is specifically interested in discussing next week, if you could either get with me at the break, or shoot me an email tomorrow, we'd like to make sure we try to get as much information in the packet ahead of the discussion as possible.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager? Next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes from January 30th and February 6th.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Seeman, second by Councilmember Snapper. Any additions, edits? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes carry unanimously. We'll now go to the legislative update and the deputy city manager.
Thank you. It's all of a sudden been very hectic in Annapolis, and trying to kind of keep my head above water with all of the information that's coming out. Last week, I'm sure you all know the Civil Marriage Bill made it out of the House of Delegates, it is, it's going to the full Senate this week, and likely will be signed this Another thing that happened this past week is that Governor O'Malley issued the details of his transportation budget, and it's fairly complex, we're still trying to learn what it entails. The Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee met on Saturday, and there was some brief comments about that. For the city of Tacoma Park, I wanted to give a sense of the transportation monies in the past. In fiscal year 2008, we received 582,000 in highway user revenue. The proposal that's going forward is to split monies for municipalities into kind of a traditional highway user revenue, and then a formula that's, that's different. And it was clear that it, no one understood it at the legislative committee, I think the study needs to be done. But the proposal then for the coming year FY-2013 would be that the city would get about 138,000 in FY-14, 250,000, and in FY-2015, 416,000. It does not get, get us back to the level that we had just a few years ago. So, that's, that's if everything went the way that is proposed, with the gas tax and a variety of things. So, we'll be following that and, and keep you posted.
And one of the difficulties of that proposal is that in setting up that separate fund just for municipalities, there is currently not any proposal to protect that money, or, you know, put a lockbox, or whatever they might do around the Transportation Trust Fund for the traditional highway user revenue monies. And therefore, it's set up as a nice little fund to pluck from as soon as they need it back, and that's a major difficulty with it, and that figure only gets us back to 70% of where we were.
Other items coming up this week? Today, the mayor testified on one of several strange sign bills. Basically, the sign bill that was championed by Senator Raskin last year, that allows us to remove signs that are posted along state highway right-of-way, and fine the owner of the signs $25 apiece, has come under attack primarily by real estate companies that want to put signs out.
And builders.
And builders, yes. The, there's a variety of bills that say, well, builders and real estate agents can put signs out, or the signs can go out on weekends, or if the state highway gives permits, they can put signs. And trying to get our handle on that has been difficult. What we have argued is that state highways are a key part of our community, they go through our business areas, and if they are cluttered with signs, it makes the areas unattractive, it gives the impression that they're dirty and not safe. And for us to have our revitalization efforts to be appreciated, we do need to keep the sign clutter under control. And so, we are submitting testimony on that in a variety of different bills, and mayor was able to get to one of five things today on that, or something, and there are several more coming up. This Thursday, there's a couple bills about the purchase of streetlights. We're trying to see if we can get testimony. I don't think that Daryl Braithwaite's going to be able to attend, so we may wish to tap somebody else who might be able to attend. If nothing else, we'll at least get testimony there. So I'm not sure if somebody's available Thursday afternoon. Please let me know, because we are trying to coordinate that and get something out so that we can get some support to delegate car.
If I can just add there, I'll, I'll make a plea that now is the time during the session when things really happen fast, and you need to be about six places at once. And it's an opportunity, if somebody wants to do it, to kind of get your feet wet and try out doing some advocacy down there for things that are of particular interest to Tacoma Park, and where staff doesn't have the time to take off potentially half a day. It can be an opportunity, if a council member has some time, wants to do that, and what I would volunteer is that if somebody wants to do that, and kind of see how it all works, there's the potential that I might be able to accompany that person down there, we'll kind of do it as a team. I can kind of...
And Michelle Douglas can also do that, right.
And Michelle as well, and potentially Candace Dunnoh at MML, so that there are ways to kind of ease into it, and get your toe in the water, and see if it's something that you want to do any more of, or if you go, oh, please, don't ever make me do that again.
Mayor Williams, I would find it very helpful, Ms. Lubow, just to have an alert, you know, as much in advance as possible about things that are not covered, or could be additionally covered, or could be better covered by myself.
Right. And I'm, I'm trying to do that. Today was a particularly hectic day, I tried to work over the weekend on some of this, but I will get it out as soon as possible, and I'll go over some of those things this evening. Also on Thursday, more in late morning, the Montgomery delegation is going to be discussing the solicitation bill, the panhandling from people in cars. We had asked some amendment to be added that would help preserve Tacoma Park's position, that we don't allow that in Tacoma Park. That is not on, those amendments did not make it into the bill, there may be a constitutional reason why, we're checking on that. This may go to the question that you can't exempt Montgomery County municipalities without treating all statewide municipalities. We're trying to make sure about that, but in particular, if we cannot have a preservation clause for Montgomery County municipalities in that, we certainly need to ensure that the, that the possibility of prohibiting that solicitation remain in the bill that Senator Raskin and Delegate Hickson have put forward. Firefighters want to take that part out, we do want to keep that in as an option for the county, and, and maybe work with that with the county. On Monday, the city's alcohol bill has its hearing before Economic Matters. I may be able to attend that, that's probably a really quick up and down, but it's good to have somebody from Tacoma Park there. There'll be several other major bills, but one of the ones that I'm trying to coordinate the presentation along with Sarah Danes, is on March 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00, it's the Capitol Budget Subcommittee, and this, we've been requested to testify on behalf of the Department of Housing and Community Development Programs, such as Community Legacy and Sustainable Communities, where we've received money in the past. We'd like to make sure that we're putting forward a really good presentation, not only for those monies, but also so people know what our economic development strategies are, so maybe money will come from other sources as well. So, that's something that we're going to try to put together, a group and a presentation, a quickie at that, but also have it so that it's shared with others in some format. So, I'm just giving...
Is that the one that Councilmember Schultz did last year?
Yep, yes, it's, it's rotated around, and we would want help on that. Another bill that, I'm not sure when it's to be heard, but this has to do with telecommunications agencies and fees that they pay to counties and municipalities. Every year, Sheila Hickson is asked by the telecommunication companies to put forward something that, basically it's a way so that they pay less money. MML, at Saturday's meeting, supported with amendments that, to make sure that municipalities have a seat at the table to talk about these various revenue options. The kind of community cable folks oppose it. I need to learn a lot more about it and bring that back to you, but my guess is that we may want to actually have that for a vote for the council to determine how, how we move forward on that.
And in the past, when one of those bills came forward, I'll say a couple of years ago, the city went down and was well-represented, testifying against the bill, and in fact, our city TV crew went down and covered the bill.
So, there's, there's, there's some ways to make that work. There's also, we've gotten a request to support a, a bill that would, for, for people whose properties are being partially taken as part of purple line development, that those peoples, the money that they would receive from state highway, and compensate them for, you know, the three feet at the beginning of their property, or whatever, that that money be exempt from Maryland income tax. So, we've gotten a request for that, we need to look at that, but that may also be one that you might want to consider determining if you want to take a position on.
Are there any such properties in Tacoma Park?
There probably will be some along University Boulevard.
Where's the boundary on University Boulevard, is it in the center?
That is, that is a question that we do not know the answer to. It is something that a survey needs to be undertaken, and we have been told that we may be able to get the state of Maryland to do that, and so far, it's not happened. So, in the past, it's been assumed to be in the middle of University Boulevard, it may be along the property line, nevertheless, it would affect any taking of land of the private properties on University. That's my quick overview today. I'll be getting out something written to you within the next few days. Can I answer any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the presentation from the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much for having us tonight, and welcome to the newer council numbers. I'm Jennifer Kurtanitis, I am the community co-chair for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. I know you all have the report in your packet, so I'm not going to read it verbatim, but there are a couple accomplishments from the past year that I'd like to, to really highlight. One, we're very proud of our continued partnership with the county, and we have a member from the county emergency management who sits on the committee and works closely with us to keep us in the loop on what's going on, and also myself, Captain Corsi, and a couple other members have attended city, county exercises, so we're all in the know, and we're working together, which is very important certainly for emergency response. In general, we've done a bit of community outreach to Tacoma landlords, to the general populace at, at the Jazz Festival, the Street Festival, and also want to thank the council for their support during Preparedness Month with the proclamation. Every little way that we can help highlight the importance of being prepared helps, helps get the message out, so we thank you for that. We have a new partnership with Washington Adventist University. Their Director of Security, Edwin Monhei, and I probably just butchered his name, but had expressed interest in working with the committee on how the university can, can help with preparedness, and they've, they've been fantastic. There's another piece, which I'll get to in a moment, that they've been very supportive of, and basically have said, whatever you need, we're, you know, we're here to work with you. So, we're really sitting down with them and seeing how we can do that. We have been looking at a volunteer mobilization center. This was something that was started by my predecessor, Wolfgang Berner, I guess, two, two years ago now, working with the Volunteer Center for Montgomery County. This is basically a, a plan to mobilize volunteers, not affiliated volunteers, after a disaster has occurred. So, people who are not Red Cross, are not CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, just folks who live in the community and say, hey, you know, I wasn't affected too badly, how can I help? Those who really, you know, really experienced some damage. So, we've been feeling our way on what the best way is to help organize this. The Volunteer Center for the county is no longer really functional, they have one staff person, and this isn't exactly, this is a very broad topic to fit within their bailiwick. So, we're going to be working with the county, we're working with Washington Adventist University, we're also working with the Tacoma Lions Club, as they said that they are willing to help to staff this center, and be trained in how you need to do that. So, we're very excited about that, and hope to have more information on our, I guess, August presentation. Also, as part of our outreach, Wolfgang Berner helped, actually, he wrote and did the outreach for public, two public service announcements, and worked with Tacoma Cable to have been filmed, we recruited local... We recruited local actors, and they're actually, you can go to the Emergency Preparedness Committee's website, and there are links to them. So one is on seniors, Preparedness for Seniors, and Preparedness for Pets. So nothing extensive, but just a few short blurbs on what you can do to be prepared. And another piece of outreach that we've been doing is regular submissions to the Tacoma newsletter. Not trying to make it too involved, but just another place that people can be reminded about the importance of being prepared. So that was kind of our 2011. In preparation for 2012, we've got some big plans on the board, and one of that is recruitment to fill two, possibly three, open spaces on the committee. We were able to recruit last year, however, some terms of, some people's terms are expiring, others were elected to council and had to step down. So we have a couple spaces, and would love to put a bug in the ear, I think, for wards, I guess, potentially now three, wards five, and wards six. We don't have any members from those areas, and if you have anybody in mind, it would be great to help us recruit folks for the committee. And you can certainly talk offline if you have more, if you'd like more information for that. We don't really have a plan in place for this yet, and I know this is something that was brought up by council last year, really trying to reach out to local business owners and also some of the faith-based organizations within the city, to figure out how we can either partner, or just kind of talk and see what, who has plans, who may need some guidance with plans, and what opportunities there are to be partners and move ahead. And certainly, we're going to continue with our partnerships with the Lions Club, developing the volunteer mobilization center, with Washington Adventist Hospital, the university, and also really trying to help develop our CERT folks, our CERT volunteers in the city. The monthly meetings are in Rockville, and it's not always easy to get folks there, so we're trying to figure out ways to better connect our folks who are in Down County with this centrally located group. Let's see. Oh, the one piece I forgot to mention when I was referencing members, I mentioned we have a member who's stepping down, Anne Ludlow, has been with the committee for six years and has decided to finally take a break and take it easy, and just wanted to express our appreciation and thanks for all of her work. She's been a great part of the committee, and we will certainly miss her and her, what she's been brought to the table. Let's see. Also, just wanted to let council know, you guys certainly have plenty of meetings that you attend out in the community. We do have members of the committee who are always happy to, if you're looking for topics for meetings, who can come and talk about emergency preparedness, and how we can work with neighborhood associations or other groups to get the word out, and just keep reminding people and helping to educate. So just like to put that bug out there. And we also, for the Emergency Preparedness Committee, our duties are listed in City Code 8. I don't have the exact date of when that was written, but there are a couple things that we would like to update. So we'd like to make a recommendation to update the code, and I'm not sure whether we have a working group with council, or we prepare a document and have you all review it. Would also like to put that on the table. And lastly, the Preparedness Committee is in support of the police department's endeavor. They are to get a police communications supervisor, emergency management support position. There's a rumor that Captain Corsi may be retiring, and we certainly, did I just blow?
Yep.
Did I just, yeah, okay. But, so now that I've let the cat out of the bag, but we certainly need somebody to help fill his shoes. So, but the Preparedness Committee doesn't officially support and encourage recruitment for that kind of position. And lastly, I'm not going to go through each of the committee members name by name, but one of the really great things about the committee is that it's not just people who've been selected to be on the committee. We have members, we have people who just are community members that join us. So I have that all listed at the bottom of your report, and a number of these members also have CERT training, so it's, you know, we're not just preaching, we're, you know, we're part of the community, helping to encourage response. So I just wanted to highlight that for the council. Lastly, in your packet, and also I have handouts for you, at our presentation last June or July, council had asked the committee to draft some, just basic guidance on how council can work, how council can support their constituents during an emergency, and that's what we have come up with. Again, in your packet, and I also have these lovely bright red folders, so you can, they can be your emergency folder. And it's pretty simple, it's just a one pager, just kind of, you know, here's what you can do, here's how we can help you, and that's pretty much it. There are a number of links in there, obviously, which you can't get to from a piece of paper. One, you can always Google them, and two, we can certainly send this to you in electronic form, so you can actually access the links.
You could give us QR codes and we could get there.
Pardon?
QR codes and we could get there.
I have no idea what that is.
Those little funny squares.
Squares with the, that you can point your phone at and-
Oh, oh. I don't think we're that tech savvy yet.
Easy to do.
Very cool.
Well, that's basically our report, so thank you very much for the time, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. One question that I want to make sure that we get a little clarity on right away is your request about the code update. Does the city manager want, or the city clerk just want to make a quick comment on that?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that the committee go ahead and mark up the code languages they would like, and then we can schedule a work session with the council or the committee, and the council can discuss that.
Okay.
Okay. And I just got two quick comments or questions. The first one, I liked seeing in here that you had had some outreach with landlords, and I wondered if you think about that as a kind of a one-time outreach, or whether in reaching out to them, they had said, gee, this needs to be a continuing, ongoing relationship because we have turnover with residents and want to make sure that we don't just do something once, and then as there's turnover over time, it kind of fades away. And so is that something that you've considered, or that they have expressed interest in?
To the best of my knowledge, I don't think we really received any feedback on it. Would be happy to do it again.
It's a challenging group to reach out to because of the high turnover, but going through the landlords, you have an opportunity to have some continuity there, and I think it's something the committee recognizes is very important, particularly in Tacoma Park, given the high percentage of-
Yeah, because I would think that the landlords would want help because of the high turnover. And you also mentioned the possibly having an opportunity for the council to observe a county disaster exercise. Were you able to find anything? Is there anything upcoming? Is it something that you need to keep us apprised of? Did somebody push back and say no?
For the exercises that have occurred so far, it wasn't the best fit, and, I mean, we'll basically have to keep you apprised as we go along. We've talked a little bit with the county about maybe having an exercise strictly for council members from different municipalities. Nothing's really happened with that yet, so we're-
Okay. Because if that's something that is a possibility, if you get me any information, I could take it to the Montgomery chapter and talk about that in an upcoming meeting, engage interest, and possibly find out who might want to do it, and they might be able to facilitate something as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Snobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the committee. I think it's a great report, and I really support the work that you guys do, you all This is one of those things where, you know, nothing happens for a long time, and that's actually what you'd like, but when something does happen, it's really important-
You probably just jinxed us.
Pardon me?
You probably just jinxed us.
Yeah, I know, I probably have. But I'm on a COG committee, the Transportation Planning Board, and they've been extremely concerned with the snowmageddon last year, and can we do better this time? And one of the things that I really want to support in what you've been doing is, well, two things really. One is the landlord communications. I know it's difficult, but I think it's really important. The landlords often know which residents have mobility or other needs, special needs that need to be addressed during an emergency. And as you say, we have a lot of, we have a lot of rental buildings in Tacoma Park. I have quite a few in my ward. The second thing I want to support is your efforts to partner with businesses, particularly, I think grocery stores and gas stations, because they're sort of the key, those are the two sort of key things that happens when an emergency lasts for a period of time. So if we got, excuse me, if we got those ice storms that we've had occasionally, where you can barely, you certainly can't even get out to your car, you know, walking's a major difficulty. Being able to get to a grocery store for food, being able to get gas for your car in case you have an emergency, and so on. So I think, I really appreciate your efforts to partner with businesses, particularly those, to make sure that they, that the city, if it needs to clean the streets better, or if the city needs to pester Pepco to restore power so that the food doesn't go bad in a grocery store, whatever, you know, whatever the particular needs are, that be given all priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming tonight, and the other members of the committee that are here. Appreciate the work you've done, the report you've given us. One of the things that I think would be helpful next time you come before the council, is if you could start to think about, how do we measure kind of the preparedness of community So that we could see whether all this work and all this effort is actually getting down to the grassroots and benefiting us. And I'm not suggesting necessarily that we, I mean, we need to get a baseline of where we are right now, and so we have some way of measuring our success. And then I just also wanted to mention that last fall, I was able to attend a class on crisis leadership and decision making for elected officials that was offered by the Texas Engineering Extension Services. At the time I was in that course, they mentioned that there are other courses that are available for both municipal staff members and elected representatives, and some of those courses are in fact paid for by the Department of Homeland Security and not, don't require city funds. And so I would ask that maybe you look into that and see what might be appropriate for us, especially, I think one of the important links, and you addressed it some with the paper that you handed out tonight, is the role that the city council members play during an emergency. That was a good class that I took there, but there may be other things that can benefit us or other staff members, and that's the National Emergency Response and Rescue Training Center that put those out. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels calling.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. And Jennifer, thank you so much, and the whole committee, for doing what you do for the city. I mean, I was privy to some meetings, and I really appreciate the kind of detail that goes into all the meetings, and how serious and how you all work everything out. I really appreciate that. I just, let's see, one thing, you left a tiny little thing out of the things you've done this year. You know, I know these things. The Jazz Festival was new, I think, this year, National Night Out, Street Festival, but the Folk Festival. We were at four major events in the city, making presentation, talking to citizens, the Folk Festival also. And just so everyone knows, one of the local actors that's in the public service announcement, I'm not going to point her out, but she is in the audience tonight. She was the one that brought her dog and did the little dog scenario with the CERT. So I won't say her name, but she's here. So that was, all that was really interesting, and I had no idea what it took to put together such, what was it, their 30-second or 60-second PSAs?
Some of them.
It took like, what, eight hours? Huge amounts of time. The logo looks great. I know, I come up with, I'm not nearly as detail-oriented, but the logo looks really good, and I thank you for the, for putting it in our very own little folder. And I'm going to encourage the council members to send out, you know, a notification to all the citizens' associations and the list serves, that there are openings on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. You can't find a committee that gives more to the city. I mean, it's just, it's one of the major givers to the city, and I'm also going to ask everyone to call on you all to come to the citizens' association meetings with a topic. I know as President of SS Carroll, we always had emergency preparedness at every single meeting. We talked about it every single meeting, and we also communicated about it online. So that's really important. That's another way, along with the landlords, that's also, we all, we always knew, the landlords are tough, but it's really important to get that information out to those folks. But thanks again, and I miss you guys.
We miss you too.
Haven't forgotten the banner. I have the banner. I'll get it ready.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your report, and we look forward to having you back again. We will move on to our work session discussion of the Sligo Park Hills traffic restriction petition area, and the deputy city manager has joined us, and we'll start the discussion.
I had lots of fun trying to write up everything that's happened with this project. Since 2006 or before, the Sligo Park Hills Neighborhood Association is kind of between the city of Tacoma Park and Piney Branch Road, with the exception of a street or so that are within the city limits of Tacoma Park. And that neighborhood has been working for some time to get access, traffic access restrictions so that people did not cut through their neighborhood. They used a county code provision, county code section 31-69, and went through the entire process. It was fairly contentious. There was a public hearing on February 24th of 2010, and we had a joint public hearing here in this building, because any traffic restrictions outside of the city limits follows county code processes, and within the city limits has a different process, and so we needed to go through and have a joint public hearing. After considering the testimony at the hearing, reviewing the technical information in the field, the Montgomery County Hearing Examiner recommended approval of the request for the traffic access restrictions into the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood, and the county executive approved the request. The city council in turn adopted Resolution 2010-34, because if certain traffic restrictions were put in, in the county, unincorporated county area, it would have a negative impact if it wasn't done concurrently with some traffic restrictions within the city. And so the city council identified several traffic restriction signs and other processes to go through in the Long and Richie Avenue area, and along Mississippi Avenue, Hillwood, Geneva, a variety of locations within that neighborhood. Avenue, Hillwood, Geneva, a variety of, um, locations within that neighborhood. The Montgomery County process requires that once a traffic access restriction plan has been adopted and said that it's, that it's approved for going forward, that the residents have a chance then, a final petition process, basically determine if, if they're prepared to live with what came up, what they came up with, with the traffic access restrictions. And the, um, intent, at least verbally, is that so that if a person lives on a street, which you can only, after traffic access restrictions are implemented, that they can only get to their house one way during certain hours, that they need to have a chance to say, you know, that's not what I thought was going to happen. I really don't like it. Or, yes, I'm so annoyed by the cut-through traffic that I want to, um, that I would have that difficulty and, uh, and accept that restriction to my home, um, to have a safer neighborhood. So there's a petition process put in place. However, the county code is, does not give that kind of specificity of a reason for the petition process and it's very vaguely written. A challenge to the approval by the county executive of the traffic restrictions resulted in a letter from the county executive that said, gee, somebody needs to figure out what the correct petition area is for the people who get to vote on whether these restrictions actually get installed or not. In order to do that, the, uh, Montgomery County Hearing Examiner, this time it's a different person, but the Hearing Examiner is to review the record, have a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the county executive as to the appropriate, um, boundaries of this petition area. The, um, I was contacted by the Hearing Examiner who said, gee, if the city of Tacoma Park wants to weigh in on that, they're welcome. And, um, the normal way that that's done is that a resolution is considered by the city council and then is put forward through testimony at the public hearing. Given that there was very little direction as to how to come up with a petition area, I reviewed some of the, um, massive record. I've got, I think, seven inches or more of, uh, the hearing record related to this, um, request. Talked with a few folks, looked at the maps, um, and came up with a possible petition area that you may wish to move forward on. The hearing, the public hearing is on Wednesday, March 7th, so there's an opportunity next week to have a resolution by you, um, to make a recommendation on a petition area. The approach that I took, and you may or may not agree with it and want it changed this, and that's fine, but the approach that I took was that the people who live on streets, on these kind of neighborhood tertiary or secondary streets, so smaller neighborhood streets, that actually would have a traffic access restriction to their home should be part of the petition area and that the, uh, folks who would have also lived on those kind of streets but would have a much larger number of cars going past their home because of the traffic restrictions, um, should be able to weigh in as well. In going through, uh, the maps, um, I came up with a series of streets that I felt met these two criteria. For the ones, for the streets that are affected where the access restrictions actually would affect the people on that, their homes, we have Richie Avenue, east of Piney Branch Road, Geneva Avenue, Hilltop Road, Mississippi Avenue, east of Piney Branch Road, Parkside Road, Sunnyside Road, Boulder Lane, Park Valley Road, Park Crest Road, south of Devon Road, Elwin Court and Oswego Avenue. The streets that I felt that would be affected by increased traffic are Midhurst Road, Sussex Road, Wessex Road and Devon Road in the small section between Wessex and Piney Branch Road. These, um, four streets would be affected by people within the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood but not being able to get into or out of their normal ways where they would have to go on these other streets to get to their homes. The only other, um, place where I saw a significant impact was on Sligo Creek Parkway itself. The traffic studies, um, and the kind of testimony at the hearing is that the major issue is for people coming, um, on Sligo Creek Parkway from New Hampshire Avenue and going to downtown Silver Spring. And so the idea is that if they're not able to turn onto Park Crest Drive off of Sligo Creek Parkway, they'd continue on Sligo Creek Parkway to perhaps Wayne Avenue and go into Sligo, um, downtown Silver Spring that way. Sligo Creek Parkway as a park road does not have a title, a type of road. This is kind of a national problem in my opinion, but that, um, it's considered just access to parkland and, and it doesn't kind of address the issue that this is a commuter route or a route that we all use for our neighborhoods. Nevertheless, um, there are three homes on Sligo Creek Parkway that their only access is through a driveway on a section that would have increased traffic and I identified those homes. And also, am I missing the street numbers? 8211, 8213 and 8215 Sligo Creek Parkway. The other areas that would be affected by increased traffic are on larger roads, whether it's Maple Avenue or Philadelphia or Piney Branch, um, University Boulevard, those various roads don't meet the criteria that the county uses for its, um, traffic access restriction program. So I thought in terms of, since this is primarily a county process, thinking about the terms and, and the functions that they, um, were looking at, um, to identify the petition area. And what I did was draw a little map, annotate a little map that shows, um, the streets that I identified in, in yellow that, homes that would, um, meet my criteria for a petition area. The, um, the other thing that I wanted to raise and I drafted a resolution that gave this information, um, it wasn't clear to me how apartment buildings start to be dealt with. And, um, 7610 Maple Avenue is really off of Richie Avenue. I did not want it to be ignored in, in this process, so, um, identified that all of the units in that building should each have an opportunity to participate in the petition process. Um, I was, did receive a confirmation call this morning from KB of the county, who's the, um, traffic engineer that has worked on this project for a number of years. And he said that they do have a policy that in apartment buildings, every unit is considered a dwelling unit that gets an opportunity to vote on petitions. And there are a number of other apartment buildings within the area that I've identified. The, um, I have one other issue that I'd like to save to the end, but, um, I wanted to hear council thoughts about what the draft resolution should say that comes before you next week, if indeed that's what you want to have happen, um, so that I can make whatever modifications you wish for, for that resolution.
If I can first get one clarification, just so I make sure that we understand, uh, in your, in your criteria for the ones that you labeled with the yellow on the map-
Correct.
And you talk about the ones that would be affected by traffic restrictions. I'm assuming you're including the county's restrictions and the ones that the city said we would do if the county does those?
That's correct.
So it's both sets of restrictions?
Right. What I, what I put forward, and it's not something that, that you need to go forward with if that's not what you want, but what I put forward was a best guess at what the Hearing Examiner might want to use as a petition area. Trying to think through some criteria for future, um, petition areas. One of the things that the county has been, county staff has been challenged by the county executive is to rewrite the section, um, of the code to try to clarify how these petition areas are coming about. So I took my best shot with some logic. If you wish to just talk about the city's streets that are affected, that's fine too.
I'll just say, I thought it was a very comprehensive, well-thought-out proposal. And I appreciate the effort you put into it. Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too appreciate the effort you put into, this is a tremendous mass of material to go through and I appreciate your effort. I have a quick, uh, question and then a longer item- -that I want to highlight in particular. The signs, as you've indicated them, just to pick one- -that I'm particularly interested in, it says, "Notice: No access to Hilltop Road, 6:30 to 9:30, Monday through Friday."
Correct.
Okay. What about residents?
Um, the, the concept here is that there's not an exception. So if you live on the street and you want to get to your house and your house is just inside that, you have to go the long way around and come from the other, from the other way during those hours because we can't have the police departments, you know, stopping people and saying, oh, you live here, oh, okay, go through. We need to have something that's pretty clear, that something stopped or it doesn't stop.
Well-
And that's part of the reason, I think, for the petition process because it's a fairly significant burden on the people that have taken us on.
Yeah, it really is because they'll, um, they will have to consider very strongly whether they would support something as draconian as that-
That's right.
-for them in particular. Right. Particularly, you know, it's one thing if you live on the edge and that's the direction you want to go, you know, kind of thing. But if you live on that edge and you want to go the other way, kind of thing, we have to like, anyway, you got the picture.
Right.
If I can just interject that that is similar to what is, in fact, now in various areas of the city, including the one at Jackson and 410.
Right.
Same deal.
Right.
There's no residents can turn here to get to their houses.
Right. Yeah, I, uh, wow, that's a hard one to swallow. Okay, thank you for clarifying that little tidbit. I have another, much larger, more general, um, concern. The map you have of recommended petition area, um, really illustrates the following issue. If you look at the, uh, yellow area, the center of that yellow area is Park Valley. And, um, there is only, you know, Park Valley is it. From, um, Maple to, um, Piney Branch. If you want to, um, cross into Silver Spring and you close Park Valley, you have to go all the way to Piney Branch somehow or all the way to Maple. So residents of, um, Ward 5, particularly the center of Ward 5, directly across from Park Valley, um, when those restrictions go into effect, um, they have a long way to go. And they are quite significantly affected by this change. They are much closer, if you look at it as the crow flies or even as you drive, than many of the other areas you have indicated.
That's right.
If they're trying to get to Silver Spring, if I live on-
That's right.
Richie-
That's right.
And I'm trying to go to Silver Spring.
Right.
Okay. I don't have very far to go at all, depending on where I live on Richie. You know, Upper Richie in particular, same thing with Mississippi and so on. But all of those residents are going to be severely impacted.
Right.
It's a way longer detour for them.
Right. During the hours that, that the restrictions are in place.
And of course, you know, we have a lot of people with, um, families who are trying to take their kids to school and so on. I really would urge to the council to add, uh, some fraction of those residents because they have, we're talking about, some of those folks are, you know, half a mile, quarter mile from, uh, Park Valley.
Could you just, could you give an example of a street? I'm just trying to orient myself.
Okay, do you have the map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Look how Park Valley points right into Ward 5. Okay? All of those houses along Sligo, there's a little collection of houses along Sligo Creek, but any of the ones on Houston, Kennebec, I mean, any of those in there are all severe, going to be severely, because you, you only have, you either go to Piney Branch, a half a mile that way, or you go to Maple. And then you still have to make the big loop around to get around to Silver Spring. And given that we've just discussed that Sligo Creek Parkway is basically, you know, parking lot during those hours, um, it will make it difficult to go on Sligo Creek Parkway. Instead, people end up going all the way around to Flower and either, either direction that way in order to avoid the traffic. Flower already is quite busy during that hour. So I would propose adding some significant portion of, uh, that center section across from Park Valley. Because they are, um, at least as affected, um, as any of the other streets in Tacoma Park or, or major portions of the other streets, streets in Tacoma Park.
Just, just to be clear, the, the approach that I took was that this was not to address people who are affected by having a longer way to go. And so if you'd like to have that as one of the criteria that you think is of an important one, that it significantly increases the length of time that they need to go someplace, that's, that's fine, but that's, that was-
That is a second.
That would be the, that would have to be part of the reasoning behind it.
There is a concern that you raised, a criteria that you raised, which is, uh, an increase in cut-through traffic.
Correct.
And that's what you'll see. So, um, people who get tired of crawling along Sligo Creek Parkway are going to turn up Houston, Kennebec, um, you know, any of those streets, even Maplewood if they're, they know it's coming. So there will be a substantial increase in cut-through traffic on streets that are already quite narrow. As you know, that the bus tries to negotiate Houston. And that's a, it's always entertaining to ride that bus. We haven't lost too many mirrors on cars, but periodically they do. So I would suggest those two reasons, additional reasons for including, um, streets. And, you know, we'd have to set some kind of definitional thing, just how, how far away you have to be or how much additional cut-through traffic you have to have. I leave that to your creativity to- -to come up with.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for, uh, the thoughtful work you put into this. It's, uh, it's amazing how such small and easy things are not so small and easy, but very complex. Require a great deal of thought, consideration, and you've put a lot of logic into this. I thank you. I compliment you, I think. It's a great job. I'm not sure if I understood you, were you suggesting that on this map that the Franklin Apartments should also be yellow?
I did not and I had real discussions, real thoughts about that. They do at least have one access point on Maple Avenue. I think that it's a, I think it's a problem for how the signage gets put there-
Right.
-for one of the exits. And I'm happy to make an argument either way.
Right. I, I would suggest it probably does need to be there because, you know, the people that I hear the most from, uh, are the, you know, if you look at this map, where's the traffic going to go if it can't cut across where it does today and those restrictions are put in? A lot of that traffic is going to come down Maple Avenue somewhere else. So based on the criteria of traffic flow and, and the increase in traffic volume, I would, uh, say it's obvious that we need to include those, uh, properties that are on Maple between Sligo Creek Parkway and Richie Avenue. And so obviously that includes the Franklin, but it also includes those other buildings. Again, just base, just based on the, uh, criteria that you've suggested, which I think is very logical.
Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you. Also, I thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for the work put into this and the reasoning. I support the suggestions of Councilmember Snapper and Councilmember Siemens to expand the petition area that we include in our resolution for the reasons that they named. So I support their expand, the proposed expansion of the petition area. So I support their expand, the proposed expansion of the petition area.
Councilmember Mail.
Similarly supportive, I would just add one more comment, which is that, you know, we have to, I guess, be aware of the precedent set in this neighborhood. If, for example, the other portion of Ward 5, just across Sligo Creek, decided it wanted to do something similar, or the Long Branch neighborhood in Ward 2 wanted to do something similar, you know, it, there's no clear reason, at least in my mind, why we would say yes to one and no to another. And, you know, I'm okay with that, but I guess I just, I just wanted to make that comment here tonight.
Councilmember Daniels.
I also support expanding the petition area to especially cover all the apartments along, at least from Ritchie, whatever Terry Siemens said, I think it was from Ritchie.
Ritchie to Sligo Creek.
Yeah. I'm sorry, didn't you say Philadelphia to Sligo? Did you say Philadelphia or you said Ritchie?
No, I said Sligo Creek Parkway to Maple Avenue.
And not including Franklin?
I'm sorry, Maple Avenue from Sligo Creek Parkway to Ritchie Avenue.
To Ritchie, right.
With the idea that a lot of those increased traffic is probably going to take Ritchie Avenue.
Right. Well, Ritchie Avenue would have restrictions as well.
Only until we put in the traffic calming modifications that we've talked about on
Ritchie Avenue.
Right.
And I'm hopeful that the council is going to find it in their heart to have that work done before the county is able to move.
Right.
On Sligo Park Hills.
I sure hope so.
And also...
Go ahead.
And also, Councilmember Snipper's request to increase it, I know that's a lot of apartments on Houston and in Kennebec, but there's also some, I'd include Maplewood also. Maplewood, you know, and the, and the top end of Maple Avenue from, from the Adventist Hospital all the way up to where it hits Kennebec. I mean, that, all that, all those single-family dwellings and apartments are going to really be affected by such changes. I mean, I know when this first came up, I came and I, even the dwellings, the people on the other side, there's going to be cut-through, it's just going to be a different kind of cut-through so that people can ziggy zag down to Maple and then cut up to Philadelphia. Sherman Avenue, Lincoln, all, it's going to have more, it's just going to be the way it is. But I, I'm not saying to expand the petition up there, all right?
Okay.
I think we'll go around for second sets of comments, and I'll jump in here and say that my reaction to the various suggestions for additions, I don't support. I think the proposal from the deputy city manager has a great deal of logic to it, and I think it's something that the hearing examiner could potentially support. I think that the people in Sligo Park Hills who originally asked for this are going to be not particularly happy with that expansion, especially as you start adding in larger groups of people. They're going to feel overwhelmed at everybody and their brother and sister and mother and aunt and uncle jumping in and wanting a say in this, and they're going to feel like this is something that was seen as a local problem, and it's, now everybody's jumping in and they're all going to have a say on it, and the original neighborhood is going to be overwhelmed by other people, and it's going to all grow like topsy, and it's going to extend, and nothing's ever going to get anywhere. That may be fine with a lot of people. It's also going to set a precedent for the kinds of things that we'll have to deal with, as somebody pointed out a few minutes ago, with neighborhoods as we consider them. I think it would essentially, with all of these expansions, not fly with the county, and I think it would not, it might even fly, not fly in such a way that it would exclude areas of the city that have the best case for being included in it. So I think from a practical sense, trying to expand it to all of these other areas, you can keep making the case. I'll speak on behalf of Councilmember Schultz, who was vociferous when this issue came up before, talking about the people coming from over in Ward 6 using Sligo Creek Parkway to get to things like the middle school, and it's like what stops you from saying, "Well, all of Ward 6 needs to be included," and then we've pretty much included most of the city in this. And I think it just leads us down a slippery slope, and I'm happy with the, with the logical, practical case that we start with that's on the map, and that's what I'll support. Councilmember Siemens was next.
Thank you, Mayor. It's appropriate that I follow up your comment because I think some people may view the suggested increases as being, anticipating that all those residents would be against the traffic restrictions, and I'm not so sure that's necessarily the case. I think that there are certainly going to be some people in those areas that, that will oppose them, probably those people who, who do use those routes and realize the great additional distance they're going to have to take to, to get to Silver Spring. But on the other side, I think there are probably a great number of people in those residences that are, really don't care and, or they would be supportive of traffic restrictions, recognizing what could happen in their neighborhood. So I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that expanding the area is going to alter the outcome. I think that, that what it does do, though, is allow those people who live in those areas that really are affected to have a voice in the process. And without that, allowing that, we create a lot of animosity in the community.
If I may, just to clarify, the, the way that the process is to work is similar to how you've looked at some of the sidewalk process, which is that the denominator is the number of dwelling units within the petition area, and the only way that it was approved is if 50% of those people affirmatively say, "Yes, they want the traffic restriction." So just wanted to be clear that that's how it works.
Can you say that another way?
It's not the majority of who sends in their votes, it's the people who...
The potential universe?
The potential universe is all of the dwelling units that are within the petition area, which means that people who don't care about it and don't vote are considered no's. And so, and that, that tends to happen the further you get away from something, or especially in larger apartment buildings, we have that as an issue.
Councilmember Mail.
Just to clarify, for the sidewalk process, we've now made the denominator something different, which is just the responses. Two just more general comments. I guess in general, I just make a statement of, I guess, what is my view, that more often we should be looking at traffic restrictions which slow the speed of traffic and use that as a tool to potentially reduce volume rather than restrictions that close off streets to traffic. And I say that for the precedential comment that I made earlier, I just think that as you start closing off streets to access, there are more and more neighborhoods who would be all too happy to have their streets closed off. And until we do a big planning process to figure out which, how we could still have a viable network in our city and do that, I just worry where that would go. The second comment is I know that the police forces has indicated a preference for only signing, only putting up signs when they, the signs are enforceable. But I would say signs like "local traffic only," they may not be enforceable, but they still have an effect in reducing volume. And I will do my best to find evidence of that and bring it back to council. But because people choose to obey the law regardless of whether a policeman or woman can give them a ticket, local traffic only signs have a, have an effect in reducing volume. And I would say that we should think about trying to use signage like that in some, in this case or in other cases in the future as a way to reduce volume as well. As I said, I'll try to bring back some more information on that in the future.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand your concerns. I do take exception with the idea that, that these traffic restrictions are a local issue. That would be true if there were more alternatives for where to go in this case. In many of the situations in which we do restrictions, it's a small, narrow street, there are plenty of other large streets that are, you know, semi-arterial or used as arterials that are not closed. In this particular case, Park Valley is, it may be no, but it's used as a major transit So that's, that's one response. The other, I agree with Councilmember Mail that traffic calming, particularly as we do it in Tacoma Park, is better than closing streets. And it's for, for a reason I've observed. In my ward, we tried for a while signage to get people to slow down, and it just didn't work. The only people who stopped at the stop signs and so on were all the law-abiding citizens, but the folks who were cutting through our neighborhoods at high speed, they just ignored those signs and continued to crash into people's cars and into people's property. One guy took out a telephone pole, took the wires down, you know, in the middle of the night. The thing that worked were traffic calming measures when, and I actually was initially opposed to those, but the traffic calming measures worked, you know, they redesigned the intersection, they put in some speed bumps, and we haven't had accident, an accident like we used to have in years. So I thoroughly support the traffic calming efforts rather than closing the streets, and I think it would actually be effective. Because one of the concerns I heard from the folks in Sligo Park Hills is it wasn't the volume so much, although they did object to the volume, but it was more that they felt totally unsafe with cars speeding through their neighborhoods at ridiculous speeds. And, you know, I just don't see why a sign is going to do that. It will have some effect, but it won't really address the issue directly, and that's why I think traffic calming would be better. So given that that's not what we're going to do, we're not going to do traffic calming on Park Valley, we're going to close that street, I really strongly urge that heavily impacted area, heavily affected area, both through additional cut-through traffic and through their own transit to Silver Spring, that that area be included.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I want to make a tactical suggestion, which is I've studied something for work and apply it myself, pricing theory. The idea, while you go into a restaurant and there are low-priced items on the menu, there are very expensive items on the menu, and the restaurant doesn't necessarily expect to sell a lot of the high-priced items. Instead, you get to extremes because they steer people to the middle. So I genuinely support the expanded area as proposed by Councilmember Snipper and Siemens, but I wonder if we could not put forward a two-tier, a core and an expanded area in our resolution and our testimony. The core area would be as proposed by the deputy city manager and endorsed by the mayor, and the full requested petition area would be the expanded area. That gives the hearing examiner something to fall back on, and we get at least part of what we want, and if we're lucky, we get the whole thing of what we want. But that's a, that's a tactical idea. I don't know if people do that kind of thing in official governmental hearings and all that kind of stuff, but I think it's something that we could consider.
And I considered the same type of approach. What I was trying to think about was, in essence, this is not our process, it's the county's process.
Okay.
And we have to, and as much as I agree with the sentiment of wanting to try and do what my colleagues are talking about, and I agree with, we want traffic calming rather than restrictions, I was trying to think about what is going to, what our best-case scenario is for getting an expanded area that will fly with the county. And I thought that the one put forward is the best. If people feel that we can make our best case for the expanded one and, and the fallback of the proposal by the deputy city manager, that's fine. I just wonder if it's kind of not really giving much weight to the expanded one and the immediate fallback, and they go to it. So that's why I didn't propose it. I thought if, it probably ought to be either one or the other, but I was afraid that going with the expanded one, we would get nothing. Councilmember Grimes, did you have, okay, Councilmember Siemens.
Just follow up on that. I think that we should submit one plan, and that is what we want, and the county already has their fallback position, which is to ignore us.
Yeah, just to, just to, the fallback position, the position that's, that was put forward is that the boundaries of the petition area would be the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood. So that would mean that Ritchie Avenue, Oswego, Geneva will not be included. But I, thank you.
So a...
Can I get a, can I get like a scuffle about what comes in the resolution to you next week?
All those in favor of the expanded area as elucidated by Councilmembers Siemens and Snipper, does that cover it all? Okay, all those in favor of that expanded area? Okay, that's what we'll go with.
I have one other item I just want to raise before this topic is ended. The, when the council approved Resolution 201034, it included some language that might have been a mistake, it might have just been kind of copied wrong or something happened. But on the back of your package item, you'll see the end of the kind of implementation steps for 201034, which is that, item five, that upon completion of the installation of the pedestrian safety and traffic calming measures on Ritchie Avenue area, the signs identified in number three above be removed. One of the signs in number three, that is the last one, which would be on Mississippi Avenue at Piney Branch, which would say, "Notice: No through traffic to Sligo Creek Parkway 4 p.m. to 7 p.m. Monday through Friday." My guess is that that should remain since the...
Right.
The restrictions are further down and you just catch people as they go in. This, this gives them the heads up that they would be caught later on about the, for the items that are in, the signs that are in number two above. So one of the things that I was thinking is that you may want to perhaps do an amendment to 201034 that just removes that last phrase.
So we can do an amending resolution as well?
Right, so that's just my suggestion in reading this.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
That's, that was it, right?
Okay, we'll do that as well.
Thank you.
So we'll have, you'll have two resolutions for us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all. We will take a short break, and we'll return for our last item. Question of the MOU with State Highway regarding Maryland Route 410, and we've been joined by the deputy city manager and the city attorney.
Thank you. I'll open this up, and either the city attorney or Del Braithwaite from Public Works is here to answer some questions as they arise. What we're bringing back to you is the results of negotiations between staff with the city attorney taking the lead, with State Highway staff with their attorney taking the lead on their side, to try to resolve some issues related to Maryland 410. And...
Excuse me, can you back up a second?
Uh-huh.
Since a question came up earlier this evening about kind of the public process and where we were, if you can just reiterate that kind of some...
That we've had lots of public meetings?
And that the council had some feedback about some of this and gave some direction about...
Yes, I was just going, I was just going there.
Okay.
Thanks. Obviously, the discussion about who should be maintaining Maryland 410 through Tacoma Park has been a topic of conversation in Tacoma Park for quite some time, and there were, the State Highway Administrator had been here to talk about the issue with lots of people and representatives. At the city council's June 6, 2011 meeting, the city council gave direction to city staff and the city attorney to interenter negotiations with S.H.A. to develop a memorandum of understanding that would outline the respective authority and responsibility of the city and of S.H.A. for 410 through Tacoma Park. We had, our little meeting teams met on August 30, 2011, and it was, it could be kind of a lively meeting, I guess, but we came up with an approach to developing the MOU, and we brought that back to the city council in a public meeting for direction. At the time, the council responded, it generally supported the approach, but wished to review the MOU before it was finalized. And so we're at that point, where we're bringing back kind of what our negotiations have brought forward for your consideration, for your next step directions, that kind of thing. We came to you on September 26, identifying that there were many common concerns of the city and S.H.A. regarding Maryland 410. Both parties are frustrated by not knowing who owns each segment clearly and who's responsible for maintaining, and each party gets phone calls from annoyed citizens who've dealt with the roads, and having whoever they call say, well, it's somebody else's responsible for maintenance. We'd like to eliminate that confusion. But obviously, there were many issues that were of concern to the council and the community and staff, having to do with utility cuts and permits, crosswalks, signalization, signage, and maintenance standards. And so we've had, after kind of one big productive meeting, we've had lots of back-and-forth, primarily by email or discussions between the two attorneys on the various provisions. As a result, we've come up with a draft MOU for your consideration and to get your feedback on it. The, one of the things that we were not able to negotiate to this point, at least, is to have sign-off authority on permits for work within the right-of-way. The proposal is that for each of the elements, the city would have a 10-day period in which to comment, and S.H.A. would respond to those comments prior to commencing any action.
And that's 10 business days?
That's 10 business days, correct. That does not mean that, I think, one question that's kind of come up is that that seems like a short period of time for certain issues. It doesn't preclude us knowing about what's going on beforehand and having much larger timeframes when it's a significant issue. And I think, you know, we already had that, I'm sure that that would continue. But in any event, that's, they also, for a lot of the kind of boring things that need to be done, that most people don't care about, having that 10-day period is a slower process for S.H.A. on, you know, changing the font on a sign or some, you know, just replacing a sign in kind, that kind of thing, that would be a pretty non-controversial item. I think that the most important thing about the MOU is that it introduces the perpetual maintenance easement, which is something that's new to State Highway's thinking, and it allows S.H.A. to go against their, at least their procedures, which is they refuse in other places to pay for roadway maintenance if they don't own the road segment. And we felt that the perpetual maintenance easement gave clarity to the maintenance of the road itself and did not go outside the curb line, so we maintain control outside of the curb line primarily.
And can I just clarify, the curb line is that it's a road and includes the curb, or it doesn't include the curb?
The gutter pan.
But not the...
Does it include the curb? It does include the curb.
So it's the back of the curb?
Back of the curb.
Okay.
The other thing is that this process allows us not to keep trying to figure out who owns the various segments, they may never be able to be figured out. The only segment that we are certain that somebody owns is the segment right outside this building, between Maple and Cedar, which used to be parkland, that the city sold to S.H.A., the precursor to S.H.A. in the 1930s, so that they could, as they were redoing 410 as part of the stimulus package in the Great Depression. The rest of the records are very difficult to figure out, and so this kind of skips around the issue of having to do all of that record searching, where we don't think it's going to come to a final understanding. The perpetual easement would not be construed as consent by the city to any future widening, and that's listed in the document. It keeps our standing of the city as it is, as relates to any condemnation proceeding that may be initiated by S.H.A. The issue of sidewalks kind of stays as it is, which is that they would fix, do ADA work on curb ramps, but not commit to improving sidewalks. There are times when they might install sidewalks. The MOU, and it says that S.H.A. will manage stormwater on its roadway, which is pretty much what they do now. We included a couple other issues with this MOU, simply so that it was all in one place and not get kind of lost through this process. One was to have someplace where we actually document the transfer of funds for the Flower Avenue project from S.H.A. and the transfer from S.H.A. to the city of Flower Avenue between Pine Branch and Carroll. Also, it includes the couple blocks of Carroll Avenue from Garland to Flower, which S.H.A. says the city owns, and it transfers this to S.H.A. That segment was something that the city council addressed, I guess, a couple years ago, and said yes, that that should go through and be transferred to S.H.A. for simplicity. There was a number of questions that Councilmember Grimes submitted today. We've done our best to do an answer to those, that is in the additional information, it was sent out late today by email as well, answering a number of questions. There were several questions, and I think I'd like to just take a moment and address the Flower Avenue issue. The Flower Avenue, the $696,000 that would be transferred to the city from S.H.A. is the amount that they determined that they would have spent to repave the roadway. It refers to city's repairs to Flower Avenue as their kind of definition, their justification for giving us the funds in swapping the road. And in addition, that project includes $200,000 from Montgomery County and $20,000 from the Chesapeake Bay Trust towards the major repairs and work for the Flower Avenue Green Street, which would be the installation of the eastern side sidewalk to decent standards, repaving the road, and it might mean moving the road in a couple places so that the sidewalk actually fits, and putting along the very most basic forms of low-impact stormwater controls alongside the road. As other funding or options or citizen contributions or whatever come along, improvements such as LED streetlights or some more sophisticated low-impact stormwater plans could move forward, but it's our estimate that we would be able to do this project with those funds.
And it would be phased because the county funds are in their 2016 CIP?
After we can see the number, but that's, we're gonna, we'll do just fine getting to those...
Right, and we had agreed that we wouldn't basically expend those funds until we got them.
Correct, and the requirement with Montgomery County is that we actually build the sidewalk. We can't ignore the sidewalk as this part of the project. So I addressed the two areas, Flower Avenue and the two blocks of Carroll. As I said, they were included because it's helpful to have, we had, you know, things in one place, doesn't necessarily require to be in the same document. It does help State Highway justify its taking on of the cost for Route 410, which it, you know, which it says, you know, Fortescue does not own. Let's see, there's... One of the things I think that is difficult with all of this, there's clearly some concern that this seems like, you know, S.H.A. retains the upper hand, and I think it does and it will, it's from the state. I think that we have, in having this negotiation, the perpetual maintenance easement is a remarkable achievement, where they weren't willing to go before. There's lots, the 10-day comment period and the need to wait for our, and respond to our comments is important. Even little things in this, like identifying who the contact people are for the various areas, is a big deal for us on a day-to-day basis. But State Highway is not prepared to, and I think will never say, it will never widen the road, they're not prepared to have very special standards for Tacoma Park. They meet state standards and national standards. We also have to follow those standards. There may be some things that we can get some flexibility on, we've talked about that, that get to a higher level, but those are frankly difficult, and we've had difficulty getting State Highway to agree to, for one segment of their statewide system, handle For the utility work, the most likely good thing, and it's work on our part, is that we kind of function as the eyes and ears for State Highway in dealing with utility improvements and the cuts that they do into the roadway and their repairs. In discussing the issues with, about utility companies, S.H.A. is as frustrated as we are, and even though they seem to, you would think they would have a bigger stick, I'm not sure that they do. So is this a full success for what the council wanted? No. I do think it's a fairly significant achievement, but we wanted to bring this back to you for comments. We have an opportunity to go back to the negotiating table to talk about items of particular concern, and I guess that's my overview at this point. Sue, is there something that you'd like to add to this?
I think Suzanne did an excellent job of describing what were the achievements of the agreement and what are the ones that we're still not happy with, but we did think we needed to come back to you and get some focus and direction as to where we need to press, because so far, this is all we can get. In other words, I would not describe this as an agreement that we're recommending for your approval, it's more telling you that this is as far as we've been able to get so far. I think, at least I, as your attorney, I'm comfortable with the aspects around the perpetual easement and the ending confusion about who's responsible for maintenance and the cost for that. I'm not as comfortable with the question of control of the things such as utilities and sidewalks and signage and signalization, all of those things. We tried many, many different approaches. We tried the idea of concurrent jurisdiction, we tried the idea of getting some kind of joint enforcement, the idea of separate permitting. I must say, we went back and back and back and back with different creative ways of trying to show that the city would continue to be a participant, having some authority on this road, and the response was extremely consistent. It was like a wall, saying, no, all we're going to give you is... It was like a wall, saying, no, all we're gonna give you is comment and review. And the only sort of additional thing we ultimately got was comment, review, and a required response. They can't go ahead with their plan until they get back to us with, you know, with a response. And maybe we could beef up that a little bit by making sure that's in writing or something of that sort. But the basic structure of simply comment and review rather than some kind of more active joint authority is what they're willing to do at this point. We therefore wanted to come to the council to say, this is where we are. Where do we go from here? What are the most critical areas that you want us to push on? And is there some other clout that we have, that we haven't exercised so far? We haven't used any political muscle, to my knowledge. I think all we've done so far is had, you know, the power of persuasion between lawyers and between staff, and that's really what we've done so far.
Can you characterize, in terms of relative timeframes, the ease with which some things were achieved or the amount of time and number of efforts of going back on, trying to find a way in on some of those things where they kept stonewalling and saying no? Was it, you know, half a dozen times of trying different things over a period of a number of months of those final things and never getting anywhere, and therefore that's why you're back here now? Or was it a constant flow of all of those processes and kind of the tail end of them was no on those other little pieces?
It's the things I'm describing as the big achievements that did not take long. We were able to come up with that sort of concept of the perpetual easement and not in any way diluting our standing for widening. Those kind of concepts we got early. The problems we've been having are these sort of operational authority kinds of issues. And I feel on those, we've gone back at least a dozen times and over many, many months.
So you've been banging your head against the wall for a long time, and you decided to stop and come to us?
Yes, exactly. Well put.
Councilmember Snapper?
I have a, well, first I want to thank you for all of this effort. I have been on the council long enough to know that these kind of things take a long time and a lot of work and a lot of, since we don't really have authority over S H A, a lot of it is cajoling, persuading, urging, all those nice words that don't carry a hammer behind it, you know, getting them to do the right thing when they don't want to. My specific, I do have a specific question. I may have other comments later, but at this point, I want to get some questions out. On page two of the draft, under one of the "whereas" is in the middle, sort of 60% down, it says, "Whereas the S H A acknowledges that the conveyance of the perpetual maintenance easement by the city will not be construed as any diminishment of the city's local authority concerning the roadway." What, can you say that in other words?
You left out the next clause, the next clause that does not conflict with the easement. So in other words, it was my savings language, you know, that anything else we get, if we haven't given it up explicitly, but of course...
So that is the intention of that clause?
Yeah.
That we get everything else except what's under the perpetual...
Right, and at least this draft, we would be giving up the concept of authority. We would be saying that we have a review and comment role.
Yeah, so that's actually where I was going to start the question.
Yeah, I think that one of the difficulties here is that the state law gives S H A a good amount of authority related to their state routes.
Right.
Whether or not, whoever owns the actual roadway. And so there's, we're tweaking the edges of that, frankly. And I think that, you know, that's just not something that is going to easily change.
I would also just say that I think we've been benefiting from confusion, that just as it's been bad to have confusion in terms of the maintenance responsibility and who's supposed to be paying for that, which has been terrible, you know, our road has been in terrible disrepair. The positive side of the confusion is we could sort of get in there and try to do some things because nobody had quite specifically said we couldn't.
Right.
So I, over the years, for example, would always argue, we had concurrent jurisdiction when it came to curb cuts on state highways, when it came to some tree issues on state highways, you know, not road, you know, things integral to vehicles passing on the road, that was clear, we didn't really have concurrent jurisdiction. But on these sort of collateral issues, we've been arguing that for a very, very long time. Again, the other side of that is we have confusion over maintenance.
And so if we did nothing, didn't have an MOU, has this process made it so that we could or could not go back to the confusion that's in our favor?
We could go back to confusion that's in our favor, but we probably also would be paying for the upkeep of the road, which I'm sure you know better than anyone, is considerable. And also, we might be inviting some kind of, a different action on a part of state highway. They could do eminent domain or some kind of more aggressive action to end the confusion in their direction.
Another question I had was, I don't think, could you say a little bit more about the pros and cons of doing separate agreements for Flower Avenue, Flower, I'll call it the Flower Avenue Carroll swap from the rest of it? What about separating the two into separate agreements? My motivation for asking this, of course, is I'd love to see the Flower Avenue swap happen quickly so we could move ahead. But if there are other considerations or other issues that came up for why it's a good idea to keep it together?
Actually, Sue, you probably can answer this a little bit better. And part of this is just how stuff gets filed and found later on, when people are trying to figure out the records of how these transactions took place, that things are more linked and more, you know, it might be listed under Flower Avenue, but it also links to this other document, so you kind of see where it all came from. I don't think it's a big deal. I think it can be done in different documents. Nevertheless, State Highway clearly feels that there, that this arrangement is not setting a precedent in other parts of the state for them to take on maintenance of roadway they don't own for 410. With Flower Avenue, I mean, I don't think that this slows down Flower Avenue in this If we needed to pull that out so that it moves quickly, I think that would be fine. We may have some discussion coming up about exactly when we want the swap to take place. There's advantages, obviously, for the transfer to take place before we have to get permits, because we don't want to have to go through state highway to get the permits for our project. The other side of that has to do with some benefits that we might have about having some telephone holes moved while state highway still owns it, so we have, it may mean that Pepco picks up some of the tab for that part. But that's, those are small logistics. I don't think they're a big issue, and they certainly, I don't think are a big issue for this document.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. We seem to be looking for a legal solution to a political problem here, and so many of my questions, we're obliquely getting at that. Deputy City Manager Lolo, your narrative has been full of words like authority and allows, and with no words such as responsibility and requires. So we seem to be sacrificing all kinds of things without sufficient assurances that we will get what we're looking for. Meanwhile, there were potholes on Philadelphia Avenue just uphill from here over the winter, and the State Highway Administration patched them. I see no reason to believe, what I'm hearing, that the State Highway Administration will not maintain the roadway, especially if some political pressure is exerted. Effectively, I don't see why we have this MOU here in the first place.
Do you need an answer on something with that?
If you can give me a good answer, sure. I just don't understand this whole process. Maybe I'm coming to the game too late or something like this, but, okay. I'll add that the agenda packet here is incomplete, which upsets me. I not only sent in questions, they were mainly from informational purposes, not for response. I also asked for the exhibits that are referenced in the MOU, which we are not provided, and the public was not provided before this meeting.
And the reason for that is that it didn't make sense to go forward with those exhibits if we don't have council direction to move forward. It was, that's a...
Well, so we have an incomplete version of the MOU here to consider tonight.
This is a draft for you to make sure that we're going in the right direction.
Are you saying these exhibits don't exist?
No, most of them do not exist. We still have to, we have to pull the titles, we have to, you know, there's processes for these various aspects.
Okay, this strikes me as strange. There's a lot I just don't understand here. If the council voted years ago to convey the 7800 block of Carroll Avenue to the state, why hasn't there been none? Why is it waited until now? Why is it bundled, disparted, all of this? I am not suggesting revisiting that prior council decision, which I haven't researched. I don't understand that. Okay, so I don't, I guess there's no particular answer here. You know, there are drafting inconsistencies, holes, grammatical errors, and there's not too many, but, you know, enough that I, missing exhibits that haven't been created yet, this is not a product that is worthy of council consideration, in my opinion. So, you know, it's hard to know how to react here, and I just don't see an answer to the question, why is this MOU even needed?
I would just like to respond to the issue of the exhibits. They are in rough draft form, probably not ready for public view, but they do, you know, they exist in my office, certainly. But it wasn't, that's not the piece that is in front of the council tonight. There's nothing different in those documents, which would be the actual deed of easement, for example, or the deeds of these properties for the other two segments. It's this MOU that we're struggling with, that we need more direction and more of a sense, you're the, you just said, Councilmember Grimes, I think very accurately, that this is a political question, not just a legal one. You're asking for the technical legal documents, which will be provided when you're at a stage in which you're actually, you know, making a decision about technical legal documents. Right now, we're asking for direction about, you know, general sort of policy decisions and how to best achieve them.
Yeah, okay. So to continue, Laura Charcutian submitted some very useful comments that observe that, for instance, the Tacoma Junction Task Force has done a lot of work over the last year and a half. That includes, looks at the roadway signals, crosswalks, we've had those discussions ourselves here. She observed that the MOU gives no provision for the city to request the State Highway Administration to undertake work, such as a bill that I intend to introduce in the city council in the coming weeks to add a crosswalk at Grant Avenue across Carroll Avenue, and to ask the State Highway Administration to give us timings on the signals and so on. There are over, well over 100 residents of Tacoma Park who have signed a petition to the governor, asking for the addition of 10 seconds to the pedestrian timing in Tacoma Junction. Frankly, this is shameful. It is saying that they do not trust the city government to represent their interests. I am sitting up here, I'm part of city government, I am in, I have done an inadequate job of representing their interests. This MOU does nothing to enable us to represent the interests of the residents of Tacoma Park. This first clause in here about, I'm sorry, I, oh, there's a clause in here about the betterment of life for the residents of the state of Maryland. That's baloney. It's a legal formalism that was put in here when we require substance, and it's a legal formalism that's just plain silly. So I would prefer, I would prefer to work within our existing relationship with the state of Maryland, where the State Highway Administration is subsidiary to the governor of the state of Maryland, and also answers in direct and indirect ways to members of the state legislature to try to accomplish the city's goals of getting signals and crosswalks improved, installed where they're needed. I note, for instance, that the pricing given by, I guess, the Public Works Director of the resurfacing of Flower Avenue, presumably that's between, well, what street? Between Maplewood and Piney Branch? Something like that is giving us $230,000. That's what, maybe half a mile? While the portion of Philadelphia and Ethan Allen Avenue that needs resurfacing, you know, maybe it's approximately the same. That's not a huge price ticket if we have to pay it ourselves. We don't necessarily have to pay it ourselves. I just, I just see this, this whole thing is full of excuses and evasions on the part of the State Highway Administration and the overwilling acceptance of those by the city of Tacoma Park. I'll stop here.
You should tell us how you really feel, sir. I would say that you're expressing some of the frustration that we've all had in working through this process. We all wish that we could get what we think needs to be done to happen on this particular section of state highway. And the frustration is that because we're dealing with a state entity, they have many more definitional powers than we do in terms of what the relationship is and how we can go about getting things. We have tried some, we've had involvement of some elected officials at the state level in getting through some of this issue when the road was in really bad shape. And we've recognized that we had some chances to make things happen here a little differently than State Highway was used to dealing with them. We recognized that they didn't want to set a precedent, that they would have to change how they deal with these types of issues all over the state. We came to an understanding of how they can sometimes define state routes just by putting up the signs and giving them a number, even though they don't own the road, and because it's continuous piece with other pieces that they may own, it's a state highway and they get to set the rules. We've always had the option, we could choose the option to not do any of this, and then we would be left with some of the confusion that's been talked about. Sometimes it works in our favor, and sometimes it doesn't. And one of the resulting confusions was that, and one of the major points that we made with State Highway Administration was that they had been maintaining all of this section since, was it 1957 or 66 or something like that? On the order of 50 years ago, because, how many years ago was it? Six, seven, eight, 10, that they stopped maintaining it? And for a while there, everybody kind of went, what happened? They stopped coming? And then we asked them, and they said, well, we don't own it, so we can't maintain it. So it's been a battle back and forth to get them to even recognize responsibilities to maintain, while at the same time, they have continued to do things like plow, because their truck isn't going to pick up its plow as it hits portions that they say they don't own. And we've also talked a little bit and had some language here tonight that basically says, it seems to be just about impossible to figure out who owns what pieces of that hopscotch pattern of state highway or city ownership on 410 through the city, with the only clear one being right outside the building for a block. So this is an attempt to get the best deal that we can get. And it's been a process of going back and forth with the state, having various public sessions about where we are, what we are attempting to do. And I think that we need to continue to work through this, and it's obviously... this, and it's obviously a draft, it doesn't have all of the pieces with it, because there's no point in doing all those pieces until we have something that we can put them with. There's no point in expending staff time and money to do them if we're not going to need them. So, it seems clear to me why we don't have certain pieces with this.
It would have helped to have had that explanation, and City Manager Matthews to have had a response from staff to that direct request that was made of staff. Excuse me, I'm sorry I interrupted you, I shouldn't have.
So, I'd like to suggest that we continue to get comments from colleagues, and that we, in the end, decide what it is that we want to do with this draft, given that city staff and city attorney have explained that they've been trying to get us all of the pieces that we, meaning the council, have asked them to do, and see whether we feel this is enough, whether it's not enough, whether we want to go forward with this, whether we want to pursue other ways of trying to get what it is that we need, or to have a parallel process where we're trying to get additional changes, kind of, I'll characterize it as forced on the SHA attorneys who are not budging on everything that they're not budging on now, and whether political, political push at them from a state level will make a difference. And I don't, I'm not sure I quite know the answer to that question, but that's something that we could consider.
One thing that would be, I think, useful on the kind of smaller negotiation side of things is, you know, if there's some sense of priority among these various aspects that you have. When we went into this, the priorities were to not give up ownership and to minimize the opportunity for widening. There were other things, and we went through with those other things as well, but those were the top two priorities. We've gotten those as best we can get. The other aspects, if there are certain strong feelings or a ranking or something, I think that might be useful for us to take back to the attorney, to say, our city council feels very strongly about X and Z, or whatever. Is that?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay.
That's, that's not to preclude the political aspect that people can do, but for the small, the table negotiation part, that part would be helpful.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels, come on.
Thank you. Mayor Williams. And thank both of you all for all you've done here. It's, it is a massive, I know it was a massive job. I can tell by the tone of everyone, and by your tone and what you had to do, that you've done the best that you could do. What you did mention, and the mayor kind of touched on it tenderly, was political muscle, political clout. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that's going to work. I'm new to the game too. I, I know we have some capital in the city, political capital we might be able to spend on, on some of the things that, that we might want. The one thing that I was curious about when I first read it, and I've managed to pretty much scribble all over it at this point, I thought when I was at the initial meetings, when we met with, when City out there, Neil Peterson was down here, we were going to separate the Flower, the Flower Avenue issue away from the rest of it. I thought there was actually, I didn't have time to look for it today, but I thought there was a city council actually, a motion, and it may have not happened. I mean, it may have been in a dream, it may have been what I wanted to happen, but, but something, maybe it was a straw vote of some kind, to separate, to separate that out. And I just think, I'd like to see that separated out. I need to bring a couple of comments from my constituents who, who needed to know, and some of it may be answered in Councilmember's questions, but one of them is, how much is the city going to have to put into the Flower Avenue project? To me, I know $696,000, almost $700,000, sounds like a lot of money, but it, I don't know that it's going to do the whole, the whole street, do the greening of the street, fix the mess that's on the other, on the east side. The other question was, we're going to actually fix the McAdam East Side, I guess down to the, it's down to the university, where there's only one drain, there's only one drain. There may be drain on the other side, but I couldn't, there's only one drain, and it's in front of 8413 Flower Avenue. I've been there.
Would you let me to address that briefly?
Sure.
The, besides the $696,000, there's $200,000 from Montgomery County.
But not till 2016?
Well, it goes into the project. I mean, we'll, you know, that's, it'll be part of what gets developed, and then a small amount, $20,000.
The $20,000, right.
Right. We believe that we can get the basics of the green street with those funds.
Okay.
The commitment that we made was not to use other city funds.
Right.
And we're following through on, but we need to do the planning, we need to, you know, work with the neighborhood and that kind of thing. So, so that's, that's where that was going. I would like to say that the, that the issue about the stormwater pipes, the pipes don't do anything. There's one pipe, it goes down, drains into Seigle Creek, and one drains into Long Branch.
The ones, the ones in the McAdam, no, it's actually in Concord.
The place where you see the two catch basins opposite, running each other. There's not traditional storm drain infrastructure on Flower Avenue. We're not going to install traditional storm drain infrastructure.
Okay.
That makes this a different kind of even rain garden project, because most rain gardens have an overflow into a pipe system.
Right.
We're not proposing that. It's going to be better than it is, it's not going to be perfect.
Got it. If I could just answer your question about whether the Flower Avenue project should be combined with 410 and the Carroll Avenue. Frankly, we always assumed that they could be split off, if it was better for us to split them off, and we certainly knew there was a desire to make sure Flower Avenue goes ahead regardless. The reason that at this stage, we've been keeping them together, is something that Suzanne mentioned earlier, which is that we want to be able to have an argument or rationale, not only to SHA, but also to the Board of Public Works, that we're giving something as well as getting something. And so, the deal makes it possible to be a little different than what SHA wants in terms of long-term precedent around the state. I'm not sure that's worked very well yet, but we've sort of kept it there, just in case it would help.
Well, it's clearly the, the people in this room on that, on that night, and I can't remember when it was, were crystal clear about they wanted it separated, and, and it may be one of those things that, that can't happen because of the politic of it, if you will, I may be using the wrong word, but just the negotiation, the negotiation of it, that's probably a much better word.
What I'm hearing is that it's in there now because it may be to our advantage to keep it there.
Okay.
We can always take it out.
Now, the other question is, once the rain garden's in, and I actually have some experience with a rain garden, I know what it's taken to, to make that happen. It's taken a lot of volunteers, hand watering, digging, cleaning, pulling, pushing, and who's going to pay for that? Because I don't know, I mean, I know that the community is pretty well organized where the Sheridan Hancock rain garden is, and we all take care of it. I don't want to, I don't mean to belittle Flower Avenue residents, I don't mean that, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that they'll be willing to actually do what it takes to, to make all that grow and work and, and be a French drain, basically. A big French drain.
The, the response that we've had from the residents on both sides has been remarkable. Nevertheless, it's going to take a property-by-property discussion, and, and that takes work. Also, the, Francis Seigle Creek have offered to have assistance and do training of residents and work with the residents on that, on that. So, we're hoping to use them very well.
Okay, great, that's, that's great. Now, the, the last one, and this is, you know, constituent questions, is, we're going to be fixing up, it sounds like, on Flower Avenue, the east side, and the, it's hard for me to say. Those people don't pay any taxes in Tacoma Park, and yet it's going to be basically, well, the $700,000 plus $200,000 from Montgomery County, but, but it's probably going to end up, probably, I'm being probable, a little bit of our taxes as well. And, and I know, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Suzanne, I hear you saying that it's not going to be any money from, from within the city, but the reality of it is, it may in fact eventually be that.
Obviously, over time, and we've identified the costs of, you know, over, over the years, we'll have to replace the sidewalk and do maintenance and that kind of thing, there will be those costs. The people outside of the city will benefit from the project. Also, people within the city benefit from the project, because if you're going on the bus, you get on one side and you get off on the other side.
Right.
If you're walking to Rowling Terrace and you're a student from the city of Tacoma Park, right now, they can't go the right way to get to their school, because the sidewalks are so bad.
Nasty.
So, the, so the argument that has been part of the project is that we've been arguing and advocating for this work to be done by the county or by the SHA for years and years and years, and it wasn't getting anywhere, and it's quite dangerous.
All right, Ben, I just, because, I just got ahold of this, like, last night, and at 2:00 AM, I'm reading it, is there any way that we can, and this may be way off the wall, but I'm going to say it anyhow, as a council, sit down and actually talk about utilizing some of the constituents' suggestions? Because I think historic Tacoma has hit on some really good points, several of the other constituents, Lloyd has hit on some really, really, you know, good points. I don't know if it can go anywhere, but the other thing is the political muscle, and, and I don't want to name names right here, right now, but there's, we have some muscle here that, that we might be able to utilize. I don't want to waste that muscle either, you know, I don't want to use.
You're talking about me?
Yeah, I'm talking about Terry Siemens, is who I'm talking about. I don't want to, I don't want to use it if, if it's not going to do any good, you know? You all know better about that than, than I do. But is there a way, I mean, we, I don't know if we can have a, what is it? I don't want to call it a brainstorm.
Powwow.
A powwow brainstorm session, if we just sit down as a council and.
A work session.
A work session, that was a word I was struggling for, as a council, and just work some of this out. Work session, right there it is.
Really?
Right there, it's right over here. And just see, and maybe with one of you, or all, you know, with Barbara, just, you know, work it out. Is that a thought, a possibility?
I mean, I think that, that part of that gets to what I requested, which is if there are certain priorities that we can.
Set the priorities.
That can be useful. We certainly can share and in discussion about some places where we don't think state highway can even legally go, and so, you know, there are things that, you know, the biggest political muscle in the world aren't going to make those changes.
Right.
So, knowing, though, what your priorities are can give us a way to respond to that.
And just a quick reminder that in talking about the areas where the houses that would get the sidewalk in front aren't in the city, it can work in reverse. There are areas in the city, like along Eastern Avenue, where the sidewalk and the curb and all of that infrastructure is the District of Columbia, but the residents whose houses this is in front of are Tacoma Park. So, it, it kind of balances out. Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you've done in putting this together at council's direction. I have a sort of a series of questions, and many of them are small questions, some of them are political questions back to the, to the council. I'm looking at the June 6th meeting minutes, which is one of the first places that direction came up from council to staff on what to work on, and I just wanted to go through the minutes layout six criteria. First, the controls are in place that 410 may not be expanded in Tacoma Park by adding vehicle lanes. So, that's one of the areas that I, I understand you've done a fairly good job on in association with the permanent perpetual easement in the roadway. Does the agreement, and the agreement, my understanding of looking at the language in the packet, is that it talks about the city and the state owning various sections of 410, but it doesn't seem to specify which sections we own and which we do not. Was that intentional, was that the best we could do with the state?
We don't really know.
Okay.
I mean, I think that the, I think that, certainly SHA has a table with mile points of segments that it says it owns, because kind of their definition is that if they go in and they reconfigure the road, at least historically, then they declare it theirs. And if they don't reconfigure the road, but they just use it, they say it remains the local jurisdiction's kind of public easement.
So, we have their list, and we don't agree. I guess what I was thinking of was, if there was any benefit to us having the agreement layout, the places where we agree that we own the road and on which we're granting perpetual easement, if that would create further certainty with regard, excuse me, on this first question. It's a, it's a question, I don't, I don't have the answer to, but I just, I just raised that issue. The second point in this list, that SHA would be responsible for daily long-term maintenance of the road, snowplow, pothole, and other road resurface, that seems to be something that we more or less, even more or less negotiated, at least in the context of the direction council gave. Third, location and design of pedestrian facilities, including crosswalks, be determined by the city, that's a no.
I'm sorry, so they got question?
The location of crosswalks, pedestrian facilities, be determined by the city.
Right, that's a no.
So, and, you know, that's an area that, but that's one of the potential areas that, you know, if we can continue to talk, and we're talking about other involvement of other state officials, I would be interested. The fourth, excuse me, that permits for activities in the right-of-way, including in the roadbed, be issued by the city, and that's, I believe, a no.
It's a no, but believe me, it was, we tried very hard on that one.
My, and I understand, well, let me ask my question first, which is, Fourth of July parade, does the process change for us being able to do our Fourth of July parade, or frankly, any other parade we'd want to do?
We get permits from state highways.
Okay, so that would have changed, yeah, okay. And sorry to go through these, I just thought it's useful to go back into the notes.
It's very helpful.
Specification for signs are adopted to allow for smaller signs, again, that's a, that's a no, they said, you know, state, state signs exclusive.
That's a no, that's also, though, something that we have looked into, some state legislation that would allow Maryland to take advantage of some exceptions in the national standards, and we've, we're not there yet, but that's something that we can take in a different, from a different point of view, rather than through the MOU.
And that's something that we have approached MML about, I guess, the last two years.
Okay, so there's another, maybe another way to get at that. And the last point here is that the city and SHA work together on signal timing issues and pavement markings. I know that's an issue that came up in public comment earlier, and then the issue of utility siding, digging, et cetera, and we haven't made, I believe, it doesn't look like there's, you know, much that the state has given on there in the document.
Right, the only thing we have is that review and comment and response.
And so, I just wanted to say that for me, to the extent to which we have any ability to continue to work on these details, that last one around signal timing is clearly important to a lot of the recommendations for the Junction Task Force, and that, you know, we may want to pursue the crosswalks, pedestrian design pieces, another one. I'm not saying that there is any room to negotiate further with staff, but those are two of the things that would be important to me. Another comment I wanted to make just more generally is that, I mean, I understand why, or at least I, from work with federal agencies, I can imagine how hard they would negotiate, the state would negotiate in this context, because they're negotiating something forever, just as we are. But on all, on many of these issues, they're really, the issues we're raising are about projects, and this, this MOU could go away. We still have the same ability we have today to try to influence SHA projects, everything from talking to state highways at a staff-to-staff level, to involving council, to involving other political players in Maryland. So, if we want to get a crosswalk, we have, this agreement doesn't change our ability to try to influence what state highways does in getting a crosswalk. It's the same, we have the same ability to do that as we have on University Avenue or, or, or any other stretch that's not subject to this, most of Carroll Avenue. So, I say that because, you know, I guess I don't want, you know, residents and ourselves to put too much into this agreement, because I feel like we, I feel like we're an outspoken community that exercises its power, and we will, we will always exercise a strong, we will always have the ability to exercise our voice when it comes to projects that we want to get pushed forward on this stretch of borders and roads.
And I would say that I think it's fair to characterize this effort as we have been trying to bring in ancillary issues that have always been unclear. trying to bring in ancillary issues that have always been unclear into a process that started out being driven by maintenance. And all the other things are involved with it, we recognized, I think, that the maintenance was the main thing that we were trying to straighten out because we recognized that it had a potentially high cost to the city if we didn't straight, if we didn't get some resolution to our satisfaction. And we recognized that we had to try and do this in a way where we could get what we wanted while giving the state highway the ability to say that they hadn't set precedent in giving us what we wanted. And knowing that, just like in our earlier discussion this evening about the area for the Sligo Park Hills, you can try for everything, you may get it, you may not, and where do you end up falling back to, and what are the things can you do to ameliorate some of the process, some of the problems? Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I think these comments have, have been made, but I'm going to be clear. You know, Flower Avenue runs all the way across, all the way on one side of my ward, as does Sligo Creek Parkway. And, but there are many other areas in the city that have border roads. You mentioned a particularly interesting one, where D C maintains it and we get the benefit. You know, this is, this is like living in a community. We have people who drive through our town on our roads. You know, they use our roads and facilities, they come to our folk festival, you know, are we going to start, you know, taxing them extra? So I, that, to me, seems like not particularly good argument for not doing it. And then I do want to reiterate that a lot of kids, I know people think that all Tacoma Park kids go to schools in Tacoma Park, but in fact, in Ward Five, many of them go to Rolling Terrace, as my kids did. And many of them walk on what passes for a sidewalk on the Silver Spring side. And it's terrible. I mean, it's really quite dangerous in, in stretches. Not all of it, but certain stretches. And people in Ward Five have wanted a usable sidewalk on that session, section for many, many, many years, at least 10 years that I know of. And we tried very hard, as Deputy City Manager described, to get the county to put it in. And even if they had put it in, then we never would have been able to do, you know, some traffic calming and other sorts of things on Flower. The fact that we will own the whole right-of-way, sidewalk, roadway, sidewalk, means that we can actually do some serious traffic calming and, if we want to. And I just think it's a, a great benefit to have a major road that many people use in Tacoma Park and not in Tacoma Park be a really nice-looking entryway instead of the pothole-filled, hard-to-drive-on, hard-to-walk-on road that it is now. And I, I'm slightly amused about comments on getting more things into the, into this M O U. Tacoma Park is not a place where we're concerned about exercising our political muscle. We exercise our political muscle all the time, and Mayor Williams has been very active at doing that, actually. He has carefully honed his elbows and, you know, sticks them out there when he needs to. So I have no doubt that if we needed additional help getting crosswalks or signalization or permits or utility maintenance or so on, and so on, that we couldn't go to our District 20 delegation and get some action on these issues. I wouldn't be the least surprised if, if we weren't getting good action from S H A that we didn't march down to Annapolis and get some action that way. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the direction we're taking in this M O U, and I would like to move it forward as soon as possible so that we can, you know, get the maintenance issue squared away on 410 and get moving on the Flower Avenue project.
And I'll just mention real quick that we have other allies on this project in addition, including a former House Chair of the Transportation Subcommittee, who is now a state official with a different capacity, who lives near the project and understands it and has a continuing interest. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. It was another, one of those complex issues. I don't think we ever started out thinking this was going to be simple, but I just, my concern is, and you know, a number of councilmembers have mentioned it before, but we certainly have, and I think we, we take great pride in our political muscle, but the other side of that issue is that, you know, what we have today may not be what we have tomorrow. And so I think we need an agreement that we're, we're willing to live with on into the future, should we not have the same kind of political muscle. And I'm not sure we're there yet.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
I guess, I, I heard you all say that we could maybe get Pepco to move some of the poles that are in the way to make everything ADA compliant. I mean, I'm assuming that's what that was about, not necessarily ADA compliant, just to get them out of the way to build a sidewalk, or?
Yeah.
You know, I see this, I know, they're horrible.
No, the, the issue on Flower Avenue is that there are a couple blocks where the roadway actually butts or goes onto people's property-
Right.
On the east side.
I know.
If, if the roadway is centered more within the right-of-way, so that a sidewalk can be put within the right-of-way, the existing power poles would be in the driving lane of Flower Avenue.
Okay.
That's, now, we're going to have to deal with that. We may just make arrangements and have easements on people's property and not move the poles, but there, there may be a couple places where some poles need to be moved.
I just, I, at the meeting we had with State Highway two weeks ago, I asked what was the holdup with getting the, I guess it was the cameras at, at the junction, and they said Pepco.
Right.
And I said, how long? And they said, could be as long as a year. So I, what I, I'm in a little, I have a little teeny bit of little trust issue because when, when they've done their job and they can't get Pepco to, the state can't get Pepco to come in and take care of an electrical problem that's going to maybe ease everyone's pain at the junction, maybe, I don't know. I, I, I don't know how you're going to get them to move any poles. You know, that's, I mean, that may be a silly thing, but I was shocked when he's, when they said a year. I mean, there's got to be some way to negotiate something, especially if you have this big stick in your State Highway administration. It sounds like they have a rather big stick, and they use it a lot-ish.
Yeah, I mean, I think those are, those are different entities-
Totally different, okay.
Different parts of Pepco, but there's no question that, just as we are frustrated at times, so is State Highway.
Okay.
And, and if you look on, in place after place, you'll see traffic signals that still have canvas on them, that are waiting and waiting for somebody to flip the switch.
And just a reminder that we've also made the appeal to Pepco to consider finding a criteria such that they could underground rather than just move.
Yes.
I guess I also, this, this, on page seven, it took me back, way back, agreement because of budgetary constraints, strikes, lockouts, casualties, acts of God, labor troubles, material shortages, riots, insurrection, war, other causes. I'm assuming that this is probably-
It's standard language.
It's standard stuff, right? I mean, I'm like, this one really got my attention. Holy cow, acts of God, and then, you know, being, shall be excused for a period of delay. And I was just, you know, wondering how that worked out with Pepco and getting them to come in and turn a switch on for them, that's all. It's not in there anywhere. It's not one of those things. Pepco is not mentioned anywhere, so.
They're probably act of God.
I was, that's where I put them.
Ms. Brithwaite, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that it'll be helpful at all, but a couple of comments. One is that on a functional level, my department deals with the frustration both on the part of State Highway and on the part of residents. And I can clearly tell you that we are in a plain ice time right now with State Highway, because everyone knows we're working on this M O U. So we're getting responses from their Fairlands Maintenance Shop that we did not get two years ago because all communication was stopped. They just determined that it was city-owned road in sections, they were not doing any maintenance, and any calls that came into their maintenance shop were directed to the Public Works Office. So there's been a transition and confusion is, is a light word to put to it, that existed or that started when State Highway, I've always suspected as a result of the budget constraints that were put through to them, where they started taking a very hard look at where they owned, where they maintained, and they have an absolute top-down process for what they do with state roads when they don't own them. And they've been absolutely clear with that, and they've been very consistent. Right now, you know, I'm sitting on a, on a group that's chaired by the former District Three engineer, who's now the acting secretary, or working in the Department of Transportation, and he asks me regularly about the process that this M O U is going through. So everyone in State Highway is aware of it, and they're looking to it, and they very much are sensitive about the issue of precedent. The other piece that I wanted to explain is, and I think it's something that Tim, Councilmember Mayo had referenced, and I absolutely agree, there's nothing, we can ask for crosswalks, we can ask for signal timing changes, we can ask for striping, painting markings now, that won't change before and it won't change after. What we all have to understand, and particularly on the community level, what we need to understand and better explain to people, is that State Highway follows criteria that are established on a statewide basis for crosswalks. So it's not just what will work in Tacoma Park or what works on two-lane roads. They're applying a template that exists in their requirements, mandated requirements on a state level related to traffic volumes, related to pedestrian volumes, related to roadway width. They, it's a, it's a cookbook, science project, that you go from A to Z. So when we ask for things, and we went through this at Carolyn-Lincoln, and had very frustrating, and, and we used all the heavy hitters in that-
And Carolyn Park as well.
Right, we, we used our political muscle and we came right up against the state standards, which is if you don't have the pedestrian numbers, and if you don't have the traffic volumes, and if they do speed tests and they don't pass the 85th percentile, you're not going to get your crosswalk, you're certainly not going to get a traffic light. What we are able to achieve, and that was through much, much effort at the Carolyn-Lincoln intersection, was we got them to narrow the roadway. We got them to paint the white line for the road edge several feet in from where they used to. And that, I do think that that made a difference. Certainly wasn't what we went into asking, with a few extra signs about caution, turn ahead. That was all we could get from a concerted effort, and it was very frustrating on my part, but I did have to understand and, and grapple with the fact that they're applying measurements that are statewide. So it doesn't preclude us from asking for these things, we just have to anticipate that we might not get the answer that we want. And we have to go through their process. They have a very clear, laid-out process where we make a formal request in a letter from the city to State Highway. They have 120 days in which to respond and review, and then they're required to get back to us with their findings. And the District Engineers Office is, is who does that in our area. Our experience with that has been sometimes they're able to, and sometimes it, it lasts, takes a little longer. They're, you know, like any other state agency or government or agency, limited staffing and many more projects to review than they have people to do. So it gets in a queue, and they work their way through it. So I just, I didn't want, I wanted to make sure people weren't any, under any illusion about what is possible in terms of, they're not, they're not capricious when they're reviewing our requests. They are absolutely following transportation standards that are black and white. And if we don't have the pedestrian numbers, and it is a bit of a chicken and egg, how would you have pedestrians if you don't have a safe crosswalk? So, you know, we, we haven't solved that issue, but, but they are working with very clear documents that, that we're not going to be able to change.
And I'll just add that I think our job is to recognize that and to search for ways that we can make the case that even though there are these standards, there's some particular thing about whatever it is that we're asking for that makes it that it doesn't quite fit their definition, their standards, and that for that reason, there's an exception, but it's not setting a precedent, just like we've been doing in trying to come up with this M O U and the whole ownership question and maintenance, that it's finding those, those cracks, those crevices in the understanding and the standards that makes it so that things can happen. What doesn't make them happen is to go up against the rules, and when you don't get what you want, stomp your foot and throw your papers down on the floor. Screen.
Because one other thing I guess I'd like to add that has kind of come, become clear through the negotiations that we've had so far, is that the attorney for S H A had some very strong feelings that certain things they couldn't do, et cetera. And in the discussions, kind of the real world got in the way. It was very helpful, we had Daryl there, and she'd say, yeah, well, this is what really happens, and the person who's the staff person at S H A, yeah, that's what really happens. And we were able to make a good amount of, they look small here, but fairly significant modifications about the approach that, that the attorney for S H A would, would have preferred to take, just because, you know, how we really have to work together on stormwater, how we really have to work together about trees, or whatever. And so we, we have tried to take, and I, and I think that we were able to make a good amount of progress simply because what seems like should be a really strong S H A authority, you know, they're the state agency, da-da-da-da, in the real world, you know, where the tree kind of falls and how that happens, really does take a joint effort. And I think that one of the things that, don't know how long-lasting it is, but through this process, we have a nice, nicer working relationship because we've kind of recognized, you know, how the different entities have, have worked together in disparate parts, and we're kind of as a group learning how that, how we have to work together to make this function. And I think, you know, I would hope that one way or the other, we continue those kinds of good feelings and consideration for each other's position that we're kind of gaining through this process.
Okay. Councilmember Mayo has some additional comments. I have one thing I want to bring up, and then we want to try and wrap this up and make sure that we give direction.
Yeah, two questions. One, it was brought up in comment, and Councilmember Daniels Cohen talked about it, in the general provisions where there's language about binding on the city, but no comparable language for it being binding on the state. Is there any way, just to-
My guess is we can fix that.
Just to balance it.
Yeah, no problem.
Whether it's, whether it's no longer binding on us, or whether it becomes binding on the state, just to, to get that to be the same. And then I guess my other question is, in terms of moving forward, moving in a forward direction, I'll say it that way. I don't know whether other councilmembers think there's any value to talking to, not to, you know, stomping our feet and going off to the, to the delegation, but just to talking to them about, you know, does this represent a, you know, how far, as far as you think we're going to get? Just, just getting that input. I don't know whether that's worth it or not, but I just, I was just curious of, of Mayor Williams, your view, or any other councilmember's views on that. Thank you.
I think we can always talk to them about where things are, and one in particular would be the staff member for Delegate Mazir, who was very intimately involved in, in some of this, and has the background and has the knowledge of what we've been going through. And I had one or two quick observations. One of the things that I noticed as I was looking through the draft- One of the things that I noticed as I was looking through the draft, I wasn't sure that it addressed what might happen with the signals when they're transferred to the county rather than the state, and how that might change anything that's in here.
It's a good question. I don't think we addressed it completely, clearly. You know, the state would love for us to transfer that, to have that transferred to the county. We should raise, we should raise that just to make sure that the language probably removes the signalization out and makes it consistent with other parts of the county and how they deal with State Highway on those things. But I think we would need to find out.
Okay. And one of the consistency things that jumped out was the, there were two sections where the language at the end of the phrase was "or his or her successor." It wasn't there in both the signalization and the pedestrian crosswalk sections. So, I'll attempt to start the prioritization of where to go from here. My sense is that people want to continue to move forward with trying to get the best MOU that we can get. Is there concurrence on that? Okay. And there are, that we will consider, we will go back around and check with officials who are at the state level who have either been involved with this at various stages, or who have expressed interest, or who haven't, who might have some suggestions on something. We can also, I'll leave it at that. And then there are particular, we need a sense of priorities of what can continue to be worked on and refined. And the one that I just talked about in terms of the signal question to the county, what are the other things that are of the highest priority? Anybody can feel free to jump in if they have a good sense of it.
If I could help, I think staff believed as we discussed this that the utility cuts, the control over that process was probably the most important.
Okay.
But I guess I'm, you know, what I've heard more this evening is about signalization.
I was going to say signalization.
So, I, you know, some sense about the relative importance of those two things would be useful.
Crosswalk, signalization.
I think it'd be helpful to have a list that we rank, if we want to do that, you know, just to come off the top of the head.
The list is, the list is that, it begins on page four. So, it's utility permits, signalization, signs, pedestrian crosswalks, sidewalks, stormwater. That would be the list.
On the signalization, Mayor Williams' suggestion that if the document were to talk about the county taking over ownership or operations of the signals, that would sort of take that issue in some ways off the table, since we expect that, across our fingers, will happen.
And we've been expecting that was going to happen for more than 10 years.
A long time.
Could this be clarified? I don't understand what ranking we're talking about here.
Priorities.
Why are we ranking signals, crosswalks, whatever?
If we're trying to get one more thing, or two more things from the state, you know, what, how hard staff and the city attorney are fighting for those things.
And how, and what we're going to be talking to any state people about in terms of what, you know, it's like, well, the question will be, what do you want? And we don't necessarily want to say, well, we want everything. It's like, our first priority is, our second priority is.
I would like an opportunity to submit specific rewarding changes in writing for consideration by everyone who's involved in this process, which shows essentially everyone who's at the dais, with the exception of the city clerk. And because I doubt that the changes that I would like to see with this MOU going forward are adequately recorded in the conversation tonight, so I will go ahead and do that. I'm not asking permission, I'm telling you I'm going to go ahead and do that. And I would suggest that other councilmembers might want to do the same.
I just want to respond that that's always welcome. There's no problem submitting things, we'll certainly...
Yes. I would like to understand better the state legal requirements, whether they're captured in state code or regulations that are sitting behind this. I haven't seen, I've heard references to state code requirements without having seen them. If you could provide assistance on identifying the state code that applies here, that'd be very helpful, save my doing the research myself. I'd further like to suggest that before any further negotiating rounds are entered into by city representatives, that, well, we talked about voting on ranking and so on and so forth, that the final, prior to next negotiating round positions be brought forward for consideration, whether it's in a public meeting or exposed to the public through some other means, that's fine with me, meaning posted somewhere on the city website if it doesn't require being exposed at a council meeting. I am motivated not only by my own desire to see the public consulted here, but my own constituents' requests that the public be consulted here in this process, the feeling I've heard from my constituents that the public has been insufficiently consulted on what's going forward. So, I would like to see very significant changes here and the opportunity to put those forward. I guess what I'm saying is that, I identified this earlier, in my opinion, as a political problem and being treated as a technical and legal one, and I think that the politically-elected officials need to have a greater say in what goes in here, and I mean a direct and explicit say in what goes in here, not just someone else interpreting what they're thinking. And that's what I would like to contribute.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to emphasize what Councilmember Grimes said, that it may not be a discussion that we want to have here at the dais. If we are in a negotiation, as one of the comments at the public comment session was, there may be appropriate for this council to meet in a closed session to discuss our negotiating strategy as we prepare for going back to the state.
And there may not, there may or may not be legal basis with the open meetings law for doing that. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but...
The only way to do that is if I'm giving legal advice, but otherwise not. We're not in a litigation posture, we're in a negotiating posture. There's no provision that would allow for a closed meeting, except the sort of concept of me giving legal advice.
Right. And just to make it clear, and there have been none of those, and that's why this has been a public process.
It is not a litigation process, but it is a negotiation to define legal...
It's not a grounds for closing a meeting under the open meeting law.
Okay. Thank you.
What I will certainly do, based on Councilmember Grimes' request, is in addition to just getting you code sites, is republish several previous legal memos that we had given to the previous councils, so that any of the new councilmembers may not have seen them, and we can make sure you see them now.
Councilmember Daniels-Cohen.
I'm listening to what constitutes of a closed and an open session. I think, I also think we need to sit down and discuss this further as a council, whether it's an open one or a closed one, we need to talk about it. And I also, I know you all did state that there was a lot of, and Mayor Williams did state, there was a lot of public opportunity for public comment, and there may well have been. I wasn't aware of it, and this is the first time, and again, thank you for doing all this work, but this is the first time anybody's seen this document. And I think it requires, whether or not we can do anything about it, at least allowing the public to comment on it. I may be way wrong and way off base, but that's what I think.
This has been the first opportunity where the draft has come back to us.
The draft has come back, right, right.
And that's why we wanted to have the opportunity to put it out to the public sooner than we usually put out agenda items, and that's why it went out earlier last week than the end of the week. And that's why this is a work session, and that's why we're continuing to have the conversation. And that's why we're giving direction, as much as we're giving direction to staff in open session to do this. If there are further comments that the council wants to do to figure some things out, we can do that one-on-one. We can do email, but we can't meet as a group and hash things out.
Okay.
Councilmember Mail.
Just going back to the voting ranking issue, the thing that I hear the most about, or I've heard the most about from constituents, is related to utility permits on this list of issues. And, you know, while it would be helpful for me to have more background on either what our legal counsel thinks we could do or otherwise, I don't really have specific ideas on our negotiating options. I just wanted to relay that that's something that comes up frequently, and I imagine is an issue that will continue to cause disruptions over time, whereas for a crosswalk or a sidewalk, we can initiate a project and, you know, to get things done, utilities are going to be a perpetual issue. It's going to, you know, dig up in front of people's houses. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
And if I can add, that my sense is that things like signalization, signs, and crosswalks, sidewalks, stormwater are all areas where we have some ability to do some things, we have other avenues to pursue them, that I think the utility permits are the one that caused us the most angst, and we don't, and since there's equal frustration on the part of State Highway Administration, it's worth making sure that we have wrestled that issue to the ground and strangled it, and then picked it back up and strangled it again to make sure that we have left no stone unturned. And then strangled it again to find some way to improve that process, even if it's to come up with a broader effort that isn't just this MOU, but is a way to make State Highway and the state have the ability through the Public Service Commission or whatever it is to deal with that issue, just as the city came up with a way to have the utilities, when they do a certain portion of work on our streets, pay into a fund to repave the road in the future when we do it, to reimburse our costs. There may be some similar way to, and that was a, I think, it was a way, it was a method that got adopted much more widely and that a lot more people are using now, and that maybe this is an area where we can help everybody get to a better way of dealing with the utility work in rights of life.
I agree with that, too.
I agree with what he said.
So, I think we have some sense of some next steps, and I think we will explore some conversations with people at the state level, and staff, and the city attorney have some additional things to do. And as part of the agenda meeting that I have with the city manager and the clerk, we will figure out a next step for bringing things back. We're adjourned.